Well, good morning all, welcome. Curry County, Oregon Board of Commissioners meeting, April 28th, 2021. It is 9:30. We please stand for the flag salute. Everybody had a microphone on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So introductions here to my far-left Director Rickert, Curry County Commissioner Christopher Pash, Court Boyce here, Commissioner John Herzog to his right, Curry County Council Anthony Pope, and to his right Staff John Jeslet. Welcome everyone. I have a line of duty deaths for police officer report. Quickly here, the numbers are growing. I'll have a more extensive report next week. As of yesterday, 109. Last year was 360. The last five years, 1,173. Last 10 years, almost 2,000. And the total number of all time line of duty deaths for law enforcement officers in the US of A, almost 25,000. For veterans, some of you remember Mike Burns was here two months ago and had quite a message for two US Senators. Want to read something real quick here, just to kind of put things in perspective for our last three wars. The number of veterans in the United States declined by about a third from 26.4 million to 18 million between 2000 and 2018. Fewer than 500,000 WWII veterans were alive in 2018, down from 5.7 million in 2000. Women make up a growing share of veterans, about 1.7 million or 9% of veterans. As of 2018, it is projected that number will jump to 17% by the year 2040. The largest cohort of veterans alive in 2018 served during the Vietnam era. This is something I didn't know when it comes to that time. 6.4 million served in that war. And you may recall, we lost 58,000 people in that, the Asian War. It lasted from 1964 to 1975. The second-largest cohort of living veterans served during peacetime, only 4 million. The median age of veterans in 2018 was 65 by service period post-911. Veterans were the youngest with a median age of about 37. Vietnam-era veterans had a median age of about 71. And WWII veterans were the oldest with a median age of about 93. Thank you Board. I also have a quick COVID report. For the last week, we gained 25 new positive cases. That puts us at 657, 627, excuse me, but we held the deaths to nine for the last three months. It was almost one year ago that we recorded our first positive case. We had a 4-H budget meeting here a little bit ago, and I asked the Speaker how she felt about the mask. I think you're going to see that we only have about a month to go. That's our hope. We need to note that Jackson, Josephine, Clamath County, all went back to extreme. There are 15 of 36 counties that are in extreme right now. So obviously, it's making a little bit of a surge. I'll conclude with this. The Governor's been partnering with the Oregon Legislature for 20 million emergency relief package to immediately aid businesses in extreme-risk counties. Some of the counties that may not qualify in that right now, we're going to be pushing hard to make sure that we're included in that 20 million. And we are. And we're getting help from State Representative Brock Smith, Senator Dallas Hurd. Very, very important. So Board, we need to approve the agenda. Any changes or recommendations there? If you would, please. Start with Commissioner Herzog.
I would ask that in discussion, action items, 7L, if we could move that to the front. I know everybody wants to be in the front, but we have a issue with a doctor who needs to get back to her practice. And it's just, it's just an ask.
I think that's very good. And I'm going to add to that, if I may, and maybe we can jointly approve this, for the request by Gordon Clay declaring May 9th National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. So we would put him at A1, so we don't confuse our numbers or have to change all of our numbers, if that's okay with the Board. And A2 would be, per your request, Commissioner Herzog, the South Coast Parks and Recreation District. So it'd be A1 and A2, if that's okay. And A would remain the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance CAFA Grant. So probably need a motion on that, if somebody would, please.
We have changes here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We'll wrap them all in, but does everybody have a consensus or an understanding on that? Okay, I'm going to go back to the front here. The Housing Committee, I want an appointment. I'd like to put that on Other and make a presentation to the Board at the end of the day, assuming we have time. If not, we're going to have to take it up on May 12th. And also on American Rescue Plan, I would like to ask Director Rickert, just, I just have a couple of questions there. So I want to pull those off the consent agenda. And then on item 7M.
Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
The 6C, where do you want to put that? In Other Also?
We could put that at the very end, which would be 7N. Does that, does that make sense, Board? The great acronym, ARP. So is that okay?
Fine with me.
Do you have anything else?
I do.
Go ahead.
I would like to pull 7A and move it to Other. I have some questions in executive session for our Assessor, and it is about some of the, some of the questions or some of the answers in the CAFA Grant. So I'm asking that, and I also asked in the executive session if Assessor Cullen would be present for that, if he, if it's possible. But I have some questions for him on the CAFA Grant, and then we can act on it after the executive session. We can still act on it in Other.
Was that, if I may ask, was that Executive Session 10? Did you already make that? Are we going to add?
26602B is what my, what my ask was.
So to consider the dismissal of disciplining and/or hear complaints through charges brought against a public officer?
I have, I've talked to Council Pope about this, and he agreed that should be talked about in executive session.
So is it related to the CAFA Grant, Howard?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
It's related to the language in the CAFA Grant.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have an issue with that. So 7A moves to 10B. Okay, so I have item 7M.
Board Chair?
Yes, excuse me.
7A would move to 12.
You're right, on Other.
Right.
No, didn't we just put that in the executive session?
Well, no, it's already in executive session.
So?
So the decision, we can't make decisions in executive session. So 7A, if we're going to make a decision, could still be made today in 12 in Other, or if we decide to after executive session, we could put it off for another week. But if we can, I'd like to move it forward today. I just have a couple of questions for Assessor Cullen on it, that's all.
Okay.
And I think we have.
So it's listed as 12B on CAFA. Excuse me, go ahead.
I think Council Pope and Director Rickert both have some things.
Okay.
I think it might be the same thing, but I'd ask that we move 7M approval to use of open gov software, if we can move that into the executive session. Since it deals with contracts and stuff, I'd like to talk about then.
As long as you help us keep track of all this today.
Trying.
So that'll go into executive session, which one, please?
D?
Commissioner?
Yes.
So.
Welcome Assessor Cullen.
Moving the CAFA Grant to the executive session is coming as a complete surprise. I'm surprised that any Commissioner would, would really want to come up with a complete surprise on something that's been in the, in the queue for this, this meeting for two weeks. But one thing I will say is you cannot put off taking some action on the CAFA Grant for another week or till, till the next meeting.
And I'm not asking to, sir.
Well, you just said that.
I'm, I submitted an ARS for executive session last week on this. Staff has been made fully aware of it, and I'm not trying to hold anything up, sir. I just, there's a language issue that I'm, I just want to ask you a couple of questions in executive session about it.
That'll be, that'll be fine. I got no problem with that. But this is part of this culture of withholding information from people that need to know that Curry County has got going on right now.
I'm not holding anything.
And you really should, if you've got questions, you really should have brought them to me when you had the question. This is, you know, I don't know what it is that you're going to be asking, but this is, this is, you know, smacks of an ambush. And I just came in here because the CAFA Grant, making a decision on the CAFA Grant cannot wait until another meeting.
And I did just hear that possibly recommend.
I did just hear you suggest that, Commissioner.
Suggest what?
That if we don't make a decision on the CAFA Grant today, we can do it another week.
No, actually, if you go back and you'd like to listen to the tape, sir, you're, you misspoke. What I said was, I would like to get this dealt with today, is what I said.
I also heard you say that it can wait for another week.
If the Board chooses. I didn't say that.
We're going to get it done today.
I said, I would like to get it dealt with today, Assessor.
Let's move on. Let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
You made your point. Thank you, Assessor Cullen. Council Pope on LM, thank you for moving that to executive session. Much appreciated. The only other thing I have, Board, is 7E. Commissioner Pash, no supporting documentation there, which is okay, except I noticed in the IRS, you asked for 60 minutes. Now, I think we've got substantial public comment here, and so I wonder if we can move that to the end of the day, because we're starting a half hour late. We have a workshop today. We have a very extensive executive session, so I'm worried about getting as much done as we can before the meeting, before the afternoon. And you mentioned you needed 60 minutes, so I wonder if we could do that at the very end of our regular business meeting today? And if, or perhaps you could put in Commissioner comments.
No, this isn't going to be Commissioner comments. This is, this is more, more talk about public health and, and what's happening here in the county. Some things that the Board has already approved that I just want to make sure the Board understands exactly what they did. And a lot of this D, E, F, G is all going to work in, and H are all going to work in together into one big topic, I'm guessing, because some of what I believe the Board did, you've, well, we'll, we'll talk about it as we get there. It may not need nearly an hour. I just wanted to leave an hour in case we had a really strong and serious talk about it. But to give up public health, and now I see where you're, you're trying to move to give up mental health services as well, I think this is something that we need to talk about, and it's, it's serious for our county. So that's why I'd rather put too much time and not use it than to put not enough time and not get all the questions answered that we need. Again, do I think it'll take an hour? No, I don't. And I, I also think that these four or five items will all gel into one, so.
So are you willing to move it to the end of the day? And I'm certainly welcome working into lunch, if that's, if that would accommodate your concerns here.
I don't, I don't think this is something that needs to be moved to the end of the day. This is something that needs to be, I don't, I don't ask very often to have things brought before these meetings that are, this, this is ultra-important, as far as I'm concerned. This, this should have been put in the beginning of the meeting, but I'm happy with it where it is, so I'd just like to leave it there, if the Board doesn't mind.
Commissioner Herzog?
I don't mind.
So you want to leave it where it is?
Yes, sir.
And the other one I had, you wanted to discuss the logo. There's no documentation on that either, but it is towards the end, so I need approval of the agenda with just a couple minor amendments.
So moved.
Second, with amendments.
Any further discussion? So you're all going to help us keep track of this, right?
We'll get her.
Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Public comments, in the order I received them, and I think we have quite a few. We're going to go to three minutes. Be fairly strict on that, but we welcome everyone here. And the first one is Michelle Martin, please.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Can you hear me okay?
Pull that other one down.
Yeah, if you would, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to bring up a few concerns. One of them was that you received a letter from Oregon State from Rachel Banks, who is the Public Health Director of Oregon Health Authority. And what she had done was, she had outlined what needed to be done, what needed to come into compliance with the county administrator, Cherie Ward. She wrote a letter to Ms. Banks, and in that letter, I went through both of these, and she followed the questions that were asked, and then she submitted that letter back to Ms. Banks. I believe that you, Herzog and Commissioner Boyce, jumped the gun by possibly receiving a phone call from David Brock Smith, who received a phone call from Kate Brown. And I think that that influenced your decision to act on this hastily. And I knew that when you guys did this with the Health Department, that mental health would be next, and as I see on the agenda today, that it is. So I don't think that you gave Ms. Ward a chance for her, her letter to be received, be reviewed, and then looked at, and then brought back to the Board, the recommendations, if there was any that she was out of compliance on or that she was in compliance on. I do not feel that you gave enough time for that letter to be received and to be reviewed. The next thing I'd like to bring forward is that Commissioner Boyce waiving fees for businesses, several businesses, and, and doing so, that hurts our general fund. It also, if you're doing for several, you need to do for all, so all businesses in Curry County should not have to pay their fees if you're waiving for others. The next thing that I would like to bring forward is that, excuse me, is that Commissioner Boyce, you were, you were, served papers for a criminal investigation. I would like to ask this Board to please go back and review Boyce's removal from chair. And I would also like to request that he is removed as a Commissioner until this criminal investigation has been gone through the courts. Thank you.
Jeanne Alby, please.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak.
Step up, just.
I want to bring up.
Can you step?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I just would like to bring up the, the public health issue and the mental health. No. I feel that, number one, you acted hastily. All my research coincides with Michelle's. I got the same information. And I think it hurts our county, and I just want to say that there was no transparency for the public. That's what the Board of Commissioners is supposed to be serving. It's a community here. And when you jump the gun and don't inform us, then we feel we can't trust, trust you guys on the Board to do what we need. If there's no transparency, there has to be transparency for us to feel we can trust you. And right now, I don't. The only one I feel I can trust is Christopher Pash. He wasn't involved in this, and I really am angry that you did what you did without giving us a chance and giving Ms. Ward, Mrs. Ward, a chance. She was doing what she was supposed to be doing. You got, and I, I know that Christopher Pash was not, Commissioner Pash was not involved in that decision to sign these papers. He, he voted against it. But now, I don't feel like I can trust my Commissioners. I feel with no transparency, that means that there's things going on that you don't want us to know until it's too late. And if you're going to take away mental health, you're really going to hurt this community. I live on second, and I deal with a lot of the mental health patients, you know, clients up and down my alley. They cause me a lot of problems, but they need help. You take it, you send it to the state, we're not going to get the help that we need. They'll go along the compliance, but that does not mean that our community is going to be served. And I would also mirror Michelle's request to have Boyce removed until the criminal investigation is over. I do not feel I can trust him, and honestly, I'm really saddened, because this really makes me have a distrust for our Commissioners. You're supposed to be serving us. Serve us. Ask us. Let us have a voice, or at least understand what's going on, so we can make alternative arrangements, if that what needs to be. Thank you for letting me speak.
Connie Lord, I believe the last name is pronounced. Do I have that right?
Good morning and thank you. I just wanted to express my opinion of the dislike, the way it was handled, as far as no public input. And it, it does feel like there was, to me, that it was some railroading, maybe against another office in this county. A vendetta? I don't know. It just happened in a weird, fast way. And second of all, I just want to say that I did have the opportunity to basically tackle Cherie and get her to stop. She was flying down the hall one day. I know she's working her tail off to do all of this public health input. And specifically, I asked her if she thought this was a good idea, and she said, no, it will be very bad for our county. To me, that was what I needed to hear. If the person that's actually doing that job thinks it's a bad idea for our county, I don't know anyone else that would have a clearer picture of what goes on in that position. Thank you.
Maria Sudeth, please. Are we saying that the right way? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Should be Sudeth.
Sure, on the U.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here on a different topic. I'm here about Southwestern Oregon Community College. I know that they're presenting today. As a Brookings resident and a candidate for the Board, I am here to offer comments and support of Southwestern Oregon Community College. I think that there is a tendency to get caught up in thinking about the college experience offered here as two separate colleges, when in fact, we are one college. Meaning that Curry County resident students have the full rights and privileges afforded them as students of Southwestern Oregon Community College in its entirety. Community colleges provide affordable pathways to careers for our youth right out of high school, or those of us who want to make a career change later on. Our campuses offer over 70 programs for our students, a wide array of degrees and certificates, providing meaningful opportunities, associate transfer degrees, associate applied science degrees, and several one-year and two-year certificate pathways. I'm wondering how many of us in our communities have checked out Curry Campus webpage or toured the campus. There you would find that our Curry Campus specifically offers the following. The campus offers general education courses, community ed courses and programs, along with specialty courses in nursing and allied health programs, education, criminal justice, digital design, and we're also your link to university camp, transfer programs. On a personal note, my grandson just turned 18, and he sees himself as a millionaire in waiting. He has read a lot of self-help books, and at the campus, they offer something that really caught my eye, entrepreneurship degree. And I am really pushing him to come to our campus and, and take that degree, hoping that it really gets him back on track to seeing school as a good thing, and that, no, he's not going to make a million dollars on his webpage, and being a professional poker gambler he wants to be. So I think that.
That probably would make grandmother too happy.
No. He wants to come see me, because I guess some of the indigenous tribes let you gamble at 18. So he's been studying how to be a, be on one of those professional tour things, so. So I really appreciate our Curry Campus, because I hope that it will get children like him back on track. And plus, the tradition in Curry Campus is also for women, being able to get back in, on career pathways that really lift up our, our residents. So I also think it's very important for that. Something I really liked about the webpage was, because I'm a retired educator, I was especially interested in reading about the education journeys of four of our Brookings residents, especially Cara Daly, who is a mom with kids. She's going to school at the same time as her daughter, and she's taking advantage of the four-year institution partnerships, so she's accelerating to get her teacher credential. So there's that story. Dani Hawthorne, physician's assistant, Karen Vastine, registered nurse, April Talbot, accountant. So I really think that and all the certificate programs, part of why I'm running is I think there's a community gap, a communication gap. I really don't think that we have enough open forums where we can hear from our community, what they would like to see at our campus and in our college. And I also don't think there's enough information out there, what we do offer. And so I just want to get that out there and support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for attending today. Gordon Clay, please. First on the Southwest Oregon Community College presentation. Gordon, please.
What was that?
You had two, two slips, so we'll combine it from, first on the.
I only had one. I had one for mental health.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. It says George Clay? Am I overlooking someone here? Come on up. Gordon, I'm sorry, I just glanced at that. Please come up, sir. That's George Clay and Gordon Clay. Or George Cady.
Cady, C-A-D-Y.
Thank you. Adjust the microphone, sir, if you would, please. My apologies again.
Cady, C-A-D-Y. Sorry, Gordon. Okay, my topic is also the college. We're going to see a presentation today from folks at the college. A couple of years ago, we attended, some of us attended a presentation before the City of Brookings councils, council members, which, in my opinion, was a complete whitewash. And I want to put us on guard to look out for another whitewash today. Slide after slide was presented at that presentation that showed a college in decline. All members of the College Board of Education were there. Nobody asked a question. We were in decline then, the college was in decline then. I think it's hit the bottom now. Even before COVID, you could walk down the hall, fire a gun, and not hit a soul in there. You've probably all received these catalogs since then that show the offerings at the Curry Campus going down, 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 excuse me, to almost nothing in the academic world. I think part of the reason for that is that we do not have reasonable Curry County representation on the Board. And I think the principal problem there is that we have at-large voting for the Board rather than district by district. I want to point out that in a number of cases throughout the country, at-large voting is being challenged and has been ruled by many courts as a form of discrimination against some group. That group in our case is Curry County with about 22,000 people, I think, versus Coos County, which has, I guess, close to 70,000 people. And so candidates down here, and bless your heart, Maria, for trying, but you have a hard time. You're going to have to do your campaigning, if you're opposed, in Coos County. That's where the votes are. People in Coos County are going to have to be educated as to why they should vote for a candidate from Curry County. If you go by. If you go by proportionality, we should have two members on the Board of Education. And until we do, no progress is gonna be made. We have great potential down here, but that particular issue, I think, completely blocks that potential. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Cady, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Gordon Clay? Did you forgive me, Gordon?
I did. I can't read my own writing, so... For the record, my name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and May 9th is National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Kids are naturally curious and have questions about mental illness. It can be challenging for adults as well as children. Myths, confusion, and misinformation about mental illness cause anxiety, create stereotypes, and promote stigma. During the past 50 years, great advances have been made in the areas of diagnosis and treatment. Parents can help children understand that these are real, real illnesses that can be treated. Parents can help children understand that these are real... I already said that. In order to talk with a child about mental illness, you must be knowledgeable about and reasonably comfortable with the subject. You should have a, a basic understanding and answer to questions such as, what are mental illnesses? Who can get them? What causes them? How are diagnoses made? And what treatments are available? Some parents may have to do a little extra homework to be better informed. Because children often can't understand difficult situations on their own, you should pay particular attention if they experience loss of a loved one, divorce or separation of their parents, any major transition, a new home, new school, traumatic life experiences like living through a natural disaster, teasing or bullying, and difficulties in school or with classmates, basically ACES. Parents should be aware of their child's needs, concerns, knowledge, and experiences with mental illness. When talking about mental illness, parents should communicate in a straightforward manner, communicate at a level that is appropriate to a child's age and development level, have the discussion when the child feels safe and comfortable, watch their child's reaction during the, the discussion, slow down or back up if the child becomes confused or looks upset, listen openly and let your child tell you about his or her feelings and worries. Considering these points will help your child be more relaxed and understand more of the conversation. If you think your child is in danger of harming themselves or others, seek immediate assistance. Teach your children the crisis text line and text SOS to 741741, since they probably prefer to text about emotional issues and crisis than talk about them. Also, left out of the proclamation was the, uh, I want to inform people that they can get these brochures and these crisis cards that tell about how to, uh, notice people in, in trouble, and then how to act on it at 112 locations in Curry County. You can find that list at zeroattempts.org/curry.html.
Gordon, thank you. Your great work. Superintendent Wilson?
Good morning, Board and public. I'm here also to speak on behalf of the support of that proclamation. Uh, from a school's perspective, uh, mental health, which encompasses social, emotional, cognitive, and behavioral well-being, is central to building a school culture and climate where all students and all who serve thrive. When support and care are requested, necessary services and supports must be readily available and offered free of stigma or consequence. Relationship building and clear compassionate companion, uh, communication are the heart of our efforts. I'd like to leave with the, the board an example of a diagram about mental health services provided by the Oregon Department of Education.
Thank you.
And with it, highlight just a couple of the key areas that we in the school district are currently working on. One is in the area of traumatic stress. It's important to recognize that traumatic events like our current pandemic, natural disasters, accidents or deaths, and intense chronic stressors such as poverty, illness, and family dysfunction have impacts on all staff and families. Although most students and adults have, have experienced trauma, um, excuse me, although most students and adults have experienced or are currently facing challenges of adversity, not everyone will be traumatized. However, schools need to be able to address these signs and symptoms of trauma. Secondly, uh, elevating the student voice. A sense of powerlessness, hopelessness, and invisibility are among the greatest contributors to stress and poor mental health. In many cases, healing is possible when students and adults are provided with meaningful opportunities to be seen, heard, and appreciated. The importance of respecting student voice and choice, engaging students in meaningful committees and decision-making bodies, as well as honoring and acting on their input, cannot be underestimated. In conclusion, as we come close to concluding this historic school year, we must be prepared for the possible long-term effects of the pandemic's impact on education. To begin to address connectivity issues, the state legislature last week passed a $275 million bill to fund summer learning programs for students in pre-K through 12. We are quickly planning a series of camps and special interest classes for students to take, not only for the knowledge learned, but also for the emotional connection to peers and school staff. This is our beginning stage of filling the gap. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, would you mind coming up here for just a minute? Gordon Clay?
Thank you very much. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve our community and enjoying, uh, looking forward to enjoying retirement after 40 years. 40 years. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your presentation. Okay, we have Connie Hunter. Public comment, please.
I'm Connie Hunter, and I'm a proud citizen of Curry County. And I get to work with these wonderful people. You know, there are many days I wake up and I say, God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. And one of the things that I've learned by participating on the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council is that those messages hold true. And one of the things that we put together, as you know, are two upcoming QPR Suicide Prevention Trainings. Gordon and I have both taken those, uh, trainings already, uh, but they're coming up on May 7th and May 14th. But the cool thing is that we're gonna be recording that QPR training. And one of the things that we've had trouble figuring out how we can reach our veterans who don't have computers, um, with good information. And I thought, I wonder, and I haven't brought it to our council because, uh, our meeting was a, a work meeting on our own last time. So just bringing it up, can we, is there a way we can get those key, that QPR recording, if it's quality good enough to run on Civic TV, um, on Curry County, uh, PEG channel? So that's one way that we can get that suicide prevention training into homes of veterans, family members, and allies who don't have, uh, technology or aren't willing to, or don't have the time on, on the days that, uh, these QPR trainings happen. Now, a, a third thing that we came up with...
Connie?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you. We're up against a staff break here, and then we have the, uh, Southwestern Community College Administration ready to go. Would you, uh, we have, uh, one other public comment, maybe two. I'd like to delay that till after the presentation. Would you be able to remain in the, in the hearing room and after?
Until about what time, Mr. Hunter? Professor Hunter? I have to leave by 12:50.
We'll be fine. We will be fine.
Okay, yes, sir. No problem.
So we'll have our presentation now, and, uh, and then we'll have a break for staff, and then we'll, we'll get you right back immediately after.
Right. And I was just up in Coos Bay yesterday for the Coos-Curry Housing Authority meeting. It was a nice trip up and back. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for being patient and understanding there. President Scott, Dean Bun, wonderful to have you here. Do we have a connection so that, uh, we, you have a PowerPoint, I believe? And, uh, we're just very glad to have you here and your willingness to talk about, uh, your college progression forward and post-COVID era that we're all concerned about. So, uh, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to you, if I may, please.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Pleased to be here. A number of my colleagues are also here with me to present and, uh, answer any questions that you might have. So just a quick, uh, COVID update to kind of start. The college, just like the rest of the country and world, has been dealing with COVID-19 since March 23rd, when the governor issued her executive order. The college campus, campuses have been closed to the public. We have been, uh, we were instructed to do remote learning if it was possible, which we were able to do for most things. Last spring, spring of 2020, we went from, uh, what we normally teach by distance of about 100 classes to 600 remote opportunities for students in the district. And I'm really proud of the faculty. They did all that in about two weeks' time. We were forced, however, to cancel all of our community education classes and any class where the instructors weren't prepared to move their content into, uh, remote environment. We projected that by the end of spring term 2020, we, we had lost about a million dollars in revenue. Moving forward, uh, during the last year, we are still under the governor's executive order, uh, limiting what we can do, limiting access to the public on our campuses. Uh, Curry has been able to, the campus in Curry has been able to essentially do face-to-face for the entire year because of smaller class sizes. They, the county, Curry County, has been in a lower, uh, county extreme for most of the time until recently. We are kind of in an interesting position where we fall under the governor's executive order, the Higher Education Coordinating Commission, the OHA, and then on a few things, we follow county guidance. So it's been a lot to maneuver, but we're figuring it out. We project that by the end of spring term of this year, we will have lost about 3.8 million in revenue. We are planning fall, we're, first of all, we're planning summer of 2021 coming up that students will be registering for, starting next week, to have free tuition and fees. We're trying to find students that have been lost out there, who've been, uh, in high school, trying to complete their education through distance, and we know that they're looking for face-to-face opportunities. We're also looking to bring in the adults that have been, uh, displaced by COVID-19 and are, are ready to, uh, pursue higher education opportunities. And our plan right now is for fall of '21 to be all face-to-face, and then we will adjust as the, um, requirements change. Just a little bit about the history. On, on, uh, Saturday, the college actually turned 60 years old. The voters in, uh, Western Lane County, Western Douglas County, Coos, and Northern Curry voted on May 1st of 1961 to create the, uh, Community College District, which is a college district. It's not a special district. It's part of the, uh, education, how, uh, all of education is funded. And specifically in Curry, the, uh, campus in our history there, next slide there, Doug, is, um, began in 1975 when the citizens wanted training there, so we contracted with the Curry Educational Service District for, uh, trainings. And, um, in the late 1980s, the Curry citizens actually attempted to create their own community college in Curry County, but it was, it failed, and the state turned down that attempt. And persistent Curry County residents didn't give up. And in 1995, they took advantage of, uh, the Measure 5 ballot measure that passed in 1990 and realized that they could join the Southwestern Oregon District and not have their taxes increased because of the, uh, $5 for 1,000 limitation that is assessed to education since now Measure 5 passed in 1990. And we opened this building, uh, there's a picture of the slide there. Hopefully, a lot of you have been up to the campus, uh, in Brookings. We opened that in 2012. And I'm going to let, uh, Dr. Alan McGee and Vice President Instruction talk a little bit, and Doug, talk about, a little bit about who the students are, how well they do. And then we're gonna end specifically about what is going on in Curry County and how we're gonna be moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Scott. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here today. Um, so I want to share a little bit about who SWOC students are, and on the slide here, you may see a familiar face. Um, this is actually Kara Daly, who is a Brookings resident. And I, I wanted to just let you know a little bit about her story because it so exemplifies our student population as a whole. So Kara worked full-time and part-time as she was raising and homeschooling her children. Did not leave her a lot of time to pursue her own education, uh, but many of her jobs were in, were in education. She was very committed to the importance of education for both her own children and supporting other, other kids. And so when her children were grown, she connected with an advisor at the Curry Campus and started working on her associate's degree. And she realized very early on that elementary education is her passion. So fortunately, we have a very good partnership with Southern Oregon University in Elementary Ed. And so Kara is on track to get her bachelor's degree. So she's gone from wanting to pursue education to pursuing education, to going on to get her bachelor's degree in Elementary Ed with the hope that she can come back into Brookings and teach. Um, and we wouldn't be able to do that partnership without online and face-to-face offerings, both on Brookings campus and the Coos Bay campuses. So that's a story there of a student who has absolutely been incredibly successful. Her daughter is now also enrolled in Southwestern Oregon University at the same time. And you know, about 60% of our students are working adults, so we do serve a population that is non-traditional, older, coming back for different kinds of trainings and their education. In addition to that, we serve students who are also community members engaged in community education, workforce training, and those who seek business advising services through the Small Business Development Center. And pre-COVID, we were working on a small business management cohort with Curry Health Network, so we had to put on pause for a little bit, uh, but we will be returning to as soon as we can this summer as we move back to work face-to-face. And I do want to say, our students do incredibly well. We are number one in the state of Oregon for degree completion and time to completion, which is a major accomplishment. Our highest success in terms of degree completion and time to completion is in our Hispanic and veteran student population. is in our Hispanic and veteran student populations. We were recognized by the Aspen Institute last year as one of the top 150 community colleges in the country. And we were the only college in Oregon to have that honor from Aspen in that cycle. Our accreditation was affirmed last year with a commendation regarding our smooth transition to remote learning during the start of the COVID pandemic. And as Dr. Scott said, we went from 100 classes online to over 600 in about two weeks. And we did so seamlessly so that we could make sure we were providing the best possible support for our students throughout a time of great uncertainty. In addition to that, we support our regional economy, both through investing in our workforce, our employees, and through the contributions our graduates make to the state overall. So at this point, I'd actually like to turn it over to Joni Miller, who's our nursing program director, to talk about the successes of the SWOC nursing program. Joni?
I need my buttons here. Thank you, guys. So like Ally said, I'm Joni Miller, I'm the director of nursing up here in Coos Bay and in Curry. And so I am standing in for Judith Dorbuck this morning, who is teaching our lovely first-year students. Their pharmacology II class, we desperately needed her to teach this morning, so that's what she's doing. I want to talk about the links between the Coos and Curry campuses and how we work corporately together, especially in the nursing program. So in, in the 18, 19 school year, we had five students down in Curry. In 1920, we bumped that up to 11, and this year, we have 12 students down in, in the Curry area. The cohort went from 24 in 18, 19 to, in 1920, we went to 31. And this year, we will graduate 43 students, which is pretty darn amazing in nursing. We're providing those nurses for you. Curry General has been gracious with working with us. Megan Vice, Vice there down at Curry Health Network, has been phenomenal to work with. She's the CNO. And has made preceptorships available within the network for our integrative practicing students that are out there right now functioning. And then they are hiring our nurses. They hired two last year from our group. And also, we have one graduate that's actually working as a preceptor down there for us now. So kudos to Curry Health Network. We have a lead lab faculty up here in Coos that kind of orchestrates all of the labs for all of the program, and that includes orchestrating the labs down in Curry. So that's kind of how that works together. She gets everything online and sends, sends the information down to the clinical faculty that are gonna be doing labs down in Curry. And also, we have the same setup with our clinical lead up here in, in Coos, kind of orchestrating how the first-years, what we're expecting out of first-year students at the facilities, and orchestrates that with the clinical faculty that's at the hospital down in Curry. And then, of course, we have one, you know, Judith Dorbuck is phenomenal, and she is instrumental in our program as well. She is the second-year faculty lead. And she teaches, she is over the second-year faculty in both Coos and Curry campuses, and kind of orchestrates that piece of the program for me. Yeah, and if you have any questions, I'm here and available.
We have about, we probably should try and conclude within about 10 minutes, including questions. Good job, thank you. Who's next? I see Doug, Dean Bun, has his microphone unmuted. Welcome.
Yeah, I took it off. I'd like to thank Joni. She's just been marvelous in, in expanding the nature of our programs, both in Coos Bay and in Curry, and finding marvelous ways of making the most out of the clinical opportunities that we have. Now, she did mention Unco Hall, which I know that listeners are aware of. A recent completion of Unco Hall, it's going to be the facility where our healthcare professionals are in. It's a marvelous facility. Those can come out and take a tour on the Curry campus. I, I like to show, show off our healthcare facilities, the beds and the mannequins. And the, the Curry Health Network has been really, or it was actually Curry Health Foundation that bought us some things that are, that are nice to make sure we have the same clinical opportunities here as, that we match up with the hospital. And we're really happy with that. And if it, that, that new facility really helps our program in that students are in state-of-the-art facilities, and they work interactively. As, as Joni was saying, Judy is teaching all of the students, those in Coos Bay and in Curry today. And other days, the students are taught from up there, and our students listen in. So it's, it's really, really goes well. Now, in the time we have remaining since kind of the last time that we were before the board, I just want to point out some of our accomplishments. In terms of workforce development, it was one of the things that we talked about. You should know that we've been working with our community. Gold Beach Lumber, down in Todd Rippey, and I got together. He told me that he had a little bit of a need for his workers to know Excel. And it's a common thing. Businesses need their, their employees to be able to work with Excel. We put together a customized training. It was about, I think we did five or six weeks. It was really well received. They learned how to put it onto their, the Excel sheets were on their little handheld devices. And we linked it up with their, their Kashi database, and it makes their sales team a lot more efficient. So it's a really good use. Ally already mentioned that the Small Business Development Center is doing the executive leadership training with Curry Health Network. And we've been pleased to be able to share that experience with them. And John Bacon is happy to be able to lead that. If you've been down to the ports, you've probably seen our flyers, the Columbia Pacific Maritime. We have a partnership, a new partnership with them. It's a great place where people can up their training certification and frankly, make more money. It's a, it's a great organization, and they provide a great service. And we're happy to be partnering with them. In terms of other activities on campus, I think you're, maybe you're familiar with SWOC and Beyond, which is something we started in October of 2019. Kelly Pincheck gave a presentation for us on the Erode River that was fairly well attended. Our speakers, we ran through into about the end of March. Before we kind of shut down, we've averaged 22 people in attendance. Some of the presentations are serious, and others are just kind of fun. The best attended were emergency preparedness now. We had almost 50 people to that presentation. Sasquatch had over 50, so a little bit on the, well, I don't know. Sasquatch people are serious about Sasquatch. And then the Beach Booty 101, which is really just treasure hunting. We also have done a monthly series. We average about 17 people at each of those events. And we average about 25 at the complex that we have where we emphasize traveling. And those were well attended, and I think well worth our time. We have been close to the general public. However, we have been offering, I get calls occasionally and say, well, we know you're, you're not having any classes, but we are. We have art, math, writing, philosophy, biology. We'd like to offer a few more, but those are the ones that we could get in the enrollment for. We don't have the face-to-face community education classes. And all of our GED students have been coming to us. We've been connecting them with Coos Bay. They've got a very good program. And Coos Bay really meets the state in terms of how they've transitioned and served the students. And we, we have a couple that are succeeding up there. We're, we're very pleased with that. In addition to providing tutoring for the local high schools during this time of need. You should know that we have, and just in terms of headcount, we have 92 Curry residents that are taking classes in a full-time role this year. That's about the same as last year. So we haven't seen as much of a drop off as we feared that we would. Going forward, we do have a plan to go to face-to-face classes with all of the areas that I just mentioned, biology, computer science, social work, psychology. We also have a new faculty member that will be joining the college. He is a Navy veteran, and he is coming to us from San Diego where he does cybersecurity. So he's very well versed, and I'm very excited about getting him into the community to do cybersecurity audits.
Thank you, Dean.
We'll return to a limited number of face-to-face community education classes in the fall. I have to be very careful there that we're in compliance with the OSHA standards. Free tuition has already been mentioned, and we plan to return to some SWOC and Beyond events as well. Putting Alcon up in his annual trek to Vulcan Lake, which is coming up here in just a few weeks. I think with that, we'll take some questions.
Thank you. Let's start with Commissioner Herzog.
I don't have any questions at this time.
I have one.
You have none?
I have one.
Okay, you're welcome to go.
You could, please. I know last we spoke, you had mentioned that you were going to be looking at expanding or starting a vocational program at the college, where, you know, once you start having students come back, you could actually do it over the internet now, having a textbook learning session during the daytime or during the week, and then having those same students go and do the vocational part of that, and partnering with some of our local businesses for, you know, local jobs that are going to be jobs that people can actually raise families on here locally, like logging, like, well, you know, learning fabrication, learning how to weld, learning how to, you know, do, do a lot of the professional services here that this county, the kids grew up doing with their parents. I can imagine partnering with, with a company like Freeman Marine and having a, a textbook learning class in the daytime or for a week or so about learning how to dig weld. And then partnering with, with Freeman Marine and having those students go down there and spend time, or finding a place like, like my ranch has, that has welders at it, and those people are willing to actually do the vocational part, the actual welding, to get, you know, to move forward to get certified. I, I've talked to some people in the county that would love to be involved in that, and perhaps the college could look at starting those partnerships as well. Because those are living wage jobs for people in our county that have grown up here, and those are jobs that are going to fall short here very soon because a lot of the kids now are leaving for academics because we don't offer any of that here. That's all I had. Thank you.
Who wants to take that question, comment?
Well, let me, let me start with the, with the welding. And we have been working with the people at the, with the Brookings Harbor High School, and we will be offering some welding classes, beginning with, we're hoping this summer, we're actually going to offer welding class. So we are moving in that direction so far. So addressing, I don't know, addressing some of the others, a little bit more challenging, as you know. You know, finding a welding instructor, the Brookings Harbor High School is, you may know their welding instructor went out for illness, and Dan Berthek struggled like crazy to find an instructor. So, Mr. Bash, we'd be happy to hear from your instructors that are willing to help us with that.
I would be willing to do that, as well as some commercial fishing people, some loggers, all those kind of organizations that are living wage jobs for this county. I would love to sit with your organization and talk about those kind of things because those are, those are the partnerships we need to form in this county.
So President Scott and Dean Bun, I just have one quick comment and somewhat of a related question, how you might be able to help. You know, I first looked at running for commissioner five years ago. One of the things I heard was that Coos County often leaves out Curry County or even Josephine County. And since I've been a commissioner, I really have experienced the opposite. Coos County's been incredible to work with. We did have one public comment today that basically Curry County doesn't have enough representation on the SWOC board. I'm not asking for an agreement or disagreement on that, but to the extent we might have an opportunity to influence the board from a Curry County's perspective, I don't know if that would probably be a matter of changing the bylaws, but something we should look at in the future so that we can assure the citizens that, you know, I'm not suggesting I have an issue or the board has an issue, just with a perception out there that we may not have adequate representation. It's something I think we could work together on in the future. Do either one of you want to take that question or hopefully contribute something there?
Yeah, we had, most recently, in the election coming up, two open board positions, one of which, two people from Curry chose to run against each other. So there was an opportunity for possibility to get two people from Curry on the board, and for whatever reason, they chose to run against each other. The college has worked very hard over the years, and there's always been at least one person on the board from Curry. A few years ago, I looked into what zoning would look like, and I looked into it again, but at that time, they said it was based on population, and the zone was run all the way up, would incorporate all of Curry, all the way up to Bandon at that time. So in my mind, I thought that that wouldn't guarantee that we'd get somebody from Curry if it was zoned that way. So I'd be happy to look at it again. You know, we, again, we work really hard to have Curry representation, and we will continue to.
Well, we have a fourth of population. Wondering though if we can jump the gun a little bit and have a third of the representation. We'll just, we'll just keep our fingers crossed. We'd love to work with you on that. And to the extent it is an issue with some citizens here, it's something over time I think we could overcome and affect change. Thank you very much. Anything else, Gordon?
Not for me.
Okay. Who's the kid on the front row here? That is the cutest kid I've ever seen. With a soccer ball. I can't thank you all enough. We're gonna go to break here real quick, and let's, let's keep working together. Much appreciated. I need everybody back here at 10:40, let's see, 10:45 if we can. It's only gonna be a short 10 minutes, maybe 10:47. Thank you all. We're in recess.
...
The primary focus we as a board have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression and recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety and welfare of the citizens regarding fire, prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So, looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So, this is a good opportunity and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So, my name is Merv George Jr. and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siski National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District Three in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us in the, in the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's, it's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our, of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue, it's bearing down on us, fire season is approaching and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfires specifically from being burnt down. That's, that's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water and we cannot live without it. It's our job to take care and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water and it's our job to keep it clean for them because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio, at the Ohio River with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on the riverbank and blessed the Ohio River that they had us come to do and I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too will remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
28th, 2021, time is 10:45. We have more public comment. Connie Hunter, would you come up the podium please?
And this is the public comment regarding the college, is that correct?
You're welcome to take your mask off if it helps, you're a little faint on the bar.
Thank you, and I've actually had my vaccines and my second one, so I do have a little leftover COVID fog brain and Commissioner Pash was able to see me stop in mid-sentence and couldn't remember what QPR stood for, I couldn't remember what the P was at the city council meeting. So, if I have one of those special moments, you'll understand what it is. But with regards to the college district, one of the things that I really want to mention is that whenever a veteran uses his or her post on 11 GI educational benefits, $80,000 positive economic impact goes back into a local community. And one of the things that is still kind of up in the air with our veterans and their post on 11 GI educational benefits is how much of those benefits can be used for online courses. Now, I know they might be looking at those changes, but if veterans aren't here to attend classes, they're up in Coos County because they do have more services there and they do have student housing. And so, I might, I just have a few questions. I couldn't do the math real quick when they said Curry County has been a part of the college district in how many years now? Is it since 70?
I heard 95.
Seventy, 75? That's what, that's what I thought. And so, what my question is, we know that right now $1.3 million a year does not get any Curry County return on our tax dollars investment. It's about $850,000 stays here and well over a million dollars actually goes out of Curry County to the college district. So, I'm just curious, how many years that million dollars or more has actually been taken out of Curry County? And one of the things that you have to understand is the board policy is you can request financial statements for Curry County specifically, but if the board doesn't approve us having that information, we won't get it. That's what an imbalance of power creates. It creates blinders so we can't really see what's going on and we can't really see how our money's being used. So, you know, unless it's disclosed like at the last presentation that they had at, at the campus when they did their annual meeting and Chris was promised 20 minutes and cut out of the agenda altogether, Commissioner Pash. Basically, they disclosed that it was $400,000 for the nursing school budget and there were, I don't know, George, can you help me?
Four or five.
Four or five nursing students. And so, you know, there's, there's some concerns about why that's happening and we know that most of the nursing students don't have, there's not enough going on at Curry campus for them to complete their nursing degree actually here. They end up being a pipeline to Coos County or they go down to Del Norte County to finish their degree without a lot of hassle. And so, there are a lot more complications and a lot more things to really take a deeper look at and we've not been able to because we can't get those financials. Thank you.
Thank you. Skip Hunter.
Finally two that have the same last name that is true.
I have, I'd like you to know that I had the fog, brain fog long before COVID.
That must be why we get along so well, Skip.
First of all, I'd like to say that Professor George Cady neglected to mention that he's a, was a math instructor there for several years, okay? I myself have taught at Curry for 10 years, also at College of the Redwoods during that same 10 years and 36 years before that in California community colleges. So, I will use that as my background. I wish that they were still here because the question I really wanted to address was to them, but I'll address it to you and perhaps it'll get to them. Currently, Curry County pays 38.8% of all the taxes collected for SWAC. That's almost 40% and we have no representation on the board. I guess the question I would have asked them was would they consider changing the at-large voting policy for board members' elections to what's called the ward process by ward, which the laws require that the number of seats on the board would be determined proportionately by population. So, you'd be guaranteed, you know, for 40% of the taxes that are collected, we should have two and maybe three seats to get representation. Now, I could go on and on and on. We have a document we put together that some of you have heard about, it's almost 90 pages of concern from faculty members and people who, staff who've worked there over the years. They make a nice little presentation, I give them credit for that, but they don't give details and I, and I don't want to give you a bunch of details, so I just chose one that popped into my mind while I was sitting there. For years, probably from year five on, I kept asking our dean why we couldn't lock our classroom doors. With active shooter situations happening all over America at colleges and other, other public places, we couldn't close the classroom door and lock it from the inside. It would be unlocked at the beginning of class by them with their key and you couldn't lock it. And it just didn't make sense to me. In other community colleges where I worked in California, security was very, very important. They have no security on the campus whatsoever. If you go to the main campus, they have 12 security trucks, they have a complete staff to take care of security. We had no security here. We're five miles from town, we're in a gun, gun community. It's, it's possible that somebody might be upset with a spouse or a girlfriend or a boyfriend or something and come out and have an active shooter situation. You can't use a cell phone inside the building. To use a cell phone, you have to go outside into the parking lot to use, to use it, which would make you a nice target. Why can't you do it? Because they didn't put it into the building when they built the building. Okay, so, I asked to get door locks, no. They kept saying, we can't afford it, we can't afford it. Then Umpqua happened and I went back into the dean. I said, we've got to get locks on these doors, we can't afford it for two more years. Then eventually, they did put locks on it, but did they buy new locks? No. We're only talking about five classrooms. They couldn't afford five locks for doors? No. They took the door locks off of the second floor that weren't classrooms and put it on, which they could have done that seven years before. But we didn't have the money. Well, 38.8% tells me that they should be able to at least afford door locks for the safety and the security of the people there. And I'll tell you what, if there had been an active shooter situation, SWAC wouldn't even exist, they would have been sued out of complete operation by their negligence. And that's just one small example. You don't hear those things when they're talking about this and that and this and that. And the final thing I was going to say is as we've seen the students dwindle, when I first started teaching there, I had classes of 18th, 16th, 18th, 15th. The last quarter I taught there before I quit, two students. Now, you might say, hey, he's a crappy teacher, I've got a whole bunch of awards I can show you and pat myself on the back for 47 years of working, I know what I'm doing, but I can't teach them if they don't come. They never advertise, no radio advertising. Dean, why don't we do this? We can't afford it. I volunteered four or five times to put together other faculty members and go and visit the high schools. Yeah, that's a good idea. Never asked us to do it. So, we're, believe me, the redheaded stepchild applies to the way we've been treated and it's, they don't even think about us. We're, a last minute, I mentioned all the vehicles, our dean, I don't know if they've changed then, I'm talking about when I worked there, had a car that was 12 years old that they gave them to commute back and forth for meetings. When you go up there, they have a $150,000 bus up there, they've got all of these vehicles. You need to see the campus and if you, if you can't have to take the time to go do it, bring up their website. It shows you aerial views of the campus and their lake and all their sports fields and their culinary school and their dorms and all the things that build a program where you build students. In fact, they recruit our students. They have flyers all the time telling them what's going up in Coos Bay posted at our campus, but there's nothing going on at Curry. Sorry, I wasn't going to get that upset. It's a smoke screen and how do you stop it? The best way to stop it is get representation on the board so there's somebody saying, well, what are we doing for Curry? We have nothing there, no clubs for students, nothing. And we don't, you know, what you can, I can promise you, I'd challenge any of you to walk on the campus at any day, go in unannounced and walk through. As you, if you say, if you use the word, it'll echo because there's nobody there. Okay, you didn't get it. Here's the deal, I was told by the dean, I, you know, I'm just as verbal with them, I'm not saying anything to you that I didn't say to them. And I said this to the dean, we need face-to-face contact. Our students in this community, they respond to teachers who give them time and attention. You're not going to get this online. And they, and he told me, we're going to a distance learning education, we're going to be a distance hub for the main campus. Now, I don't think that's what the 38.8% wanted to buy when they said they wanted to have a college in their district. The idea was originally that students could come here and take a complete AA program without having to leave. And now you couldn't get an AA program without either taking online classes or driving up to Coos Bay. And as far as online classes go, you can take an online classroom anywhere. You could take it from Stanford, you could take it from University of Colorado, anywhere and you wouldn't have to give up 38.8% of your county's money. You're not getting what you pay for. Thanks.
Thank you, Skip. So, Board, last chance to comment or ask questions on South Flithering Community College and the Curry issues, impact?
Hi, just one brief comment, as Skip knows, we looked into this last year with Council Huddle and I've briefly spoken to Council Pope about this. Once he gets a little more comfortable here, I would like to look at going to higher learning because it's not a special district, it's a college district and hopefully getting SWAC to the table and, and getting some answers and if we don't, then we go back to the citizens. And if we don't, then we go back to the citizens of the school, of the college district, and we ask them what they want to do. But we have to go through the process, from what I understand, through higher learning. But I will be still pursuing that this year with Board approval.
None of my comments were meant in any way derogatorily to this body. Thank you.
Well, guys, that's why, and I know you are pretty familiar too, so all three of us have got some interest and some, some anxious feelings to, to correct this and to contribute where we can. That's why I put this meeting together today, and, you know, the, the 38% is a pretty strong figure. And so I, I did sense though that they're open to looking at the Curry County representation on that board, and pulling the two counties together, the two districts together, and no time like now to make that happen and do everything we can. Anything else, Board?
No.
Next on the agenda is the formation of the South Coast Parks and Recreation District.
We have the consent agenda, sir.
Oh, we do have the consent agenda. Excuse me.
Move approval?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor, we'll just go that route. Real quick here.
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so the consent agenda, the minutes for the 6A, January 13th, 2021 meeting, 6D now, approved county credit card for Anthony Pope, 6E, approved county credit card for Miranda Plagie, Economic Development Assistant, 6F, appoint Commissioner Pash to the Board of Property Tax Appeals. Congratulations. 6G, transfer of an employee, Alicia Whibking-Cron, and 6H, appoint member to Tourism Promotion Committee. Anything we need to add to that board?
Well, that highlighted one.
B and C, they got moved to the very end of action items, correct?
Well, the amendment to the ODOT Transportation Grant Agreement.
Oh, I left that out, I'm sorry. That was part of the amended agenda. 6I, thank you. Amendment number one to ODOT, Oregon Department of Transportation Grant Agreement number 34195.
For the record, that was I.
What did I say, one?
Yep.
Six one?
It's all right.
I need heavier glasses. Okay, thank you, Board. So that's passed, okay? So now we're going to formation of the South Coast Parks and Recreation District. Brookings City Parks Director Tross, welcome.
Commissioners, Dr. Layton's also here. So we are present for any questions. We hope that we've gotten a lot of those answered ahead of time with Mr. Pope, and hope to see a favorable decision today.
Dr. Layton, thank you for being here today. So sorry to have you a little bit delayed there, or a lot delayed. Council Pope, do you have a report that you'd like to offer the Board and the public?
Sure, yeah. As everybody knows, in the last meeting, I asked for some additional time to kind of look into this, the formation of the special park districts are, it's a complicated process and time-consuming. I had the opportunity last week to meet with the county clerk and the county assessor and their staff. We were able to put together kind of an outline of what the process would be, and also some, you know, concerns or, and ways we can overcome those concerns, and of course, I forward those to you guys in a memo. And so I think, you know, hopefully we're giving you guys the information you need to, you know, understand the process and make a decision.
Commissioner Herzog, or Director Rickert? Did I see your pin wave there?
Well, I, I do have something. I, I read the memo that, that Council Pope prepared, and there, there's one big thing that, well, yeah, there, there's one main thing that concerns me about it. He said that after the Board initi, approves the order to initiate, the county then takes complete charge of the process of moving the proposed district forward. This includes all noticing, public hearings, preparing ballot measures, and any other work required by statute. This is quite complex and detailed. And so by, by the Board voting to, to move forward with this, that burden is being placed on the county, and I guess that's my concern right there, is, is, is the county having that burden, and who's going to make sure everything gets done, when it needs to get done, how it needs to get done.
Director Tross, do you have something to add to that? Possibly?
No, you know, initially it was about, you know, making sure that the, the costs were covered. We assured that that was going to be, be the case. So, you know, the, the processes of, you know, conducting the public hearing and things of that nature, our task force would be more than willing to assist with. You know, we're, we've gotten way too far to the finish line, to, you know, to just blindly hand it off and expect it to, you know, not, not stay involved. And so, you know, I would, I would say that we would, we would be there to assist in, in any measure, in any way we can to ensure that the county doesn't have to shoulder all that on its own.
What were the changes? Go ahead.
Well, I, I just, I, I'm in complete support. I would, you know, I know that they, Parks District will definitely do their part in, in supporting us, and, you know, they've, they've offered to put in escrow or, you know, cover the cost of an election if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass. They've met those three things, criteria that Council Pope has recommended. Anthony and I and Jay met on, on the speakerphone earlier this week and talked about that, and I understand Brad's concern, but, you know, as a, as a, as a commissioner, I would, you know, if there's anything that needs to be done at the county, I would take that responsibility personally and, and do that. But I know that the, the support from the Brookings folks would be there, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Herzog.
I'm just, I hate to throw water on the fire, but I'm just wondering if we aren't a little bit premature with some of this, in that we don't have a tax rate and, you know, has all that been figured out that I didn't see? I, okay, that's, that's evidently something that I didn't get to see, so all that's been done then.
Yeah. Go ahead and explain the process for like, where we did the budget and what that meant, if you can.
Right, yeah. So the, so, yeah, all of the outlining documents for the, for the proposed district has been completed. We have our mission statement, our strategic plans, our economic statement, our proposed first and third-year tax rates, our permanent tax rate, that's all been outlined in our economic.
Okay, I saw the strategic plan.
Feasibility statement, yeah.
But I must have missed the, the tax rate.
The permanent tax rate, yeah, doesn't get declared in that, so that's part of the ballot measure, so I think that's been shared informally, but that's not a part of the permanent document for that, for the purpose of that document. For the purposes of formation, the economic feasibility statement was what was necessary.
Okay. Any further movement on the sunset clause?
No, the, so the task force did look at the sunset clause. The concern that the task force had was that we, and our proposal is to create this district that is going to go on to lead to profound, profound impact in our community, and with our counsel and our understanding, we would need to create a situation in which the, which the district would dissolve at some set number of, of years in the future. I understood your comment from the last meeting with the suggestion that we could create an, a petition prior to the dissolution happening. I, I don't know, we didn't address that specifically with our attorney. The concern that I would have is that you can't create two Parks and Rec districts that are existing, so I'm not sure if there's any ability to create a new Parks and Rec district in the anticipation of the old Parks and Rec district ending. But what we looked at was the existing code, which allows the citizens, right? So this is a, a government, a new government that's being formed by the citizens, and, and they have to vote to form this Parks and Rec district, and in the same fashion, they can petition and vote to unform this district. So if the district doesn't lead up to the goals that we've outlined, then the citizens can, can dissolve it almost as easily as they can form it.
And I want, I want you to understand, I'm not, as, as I've spoken to publicly, I am absolutely for this happening. I think it's a great thing for the county. My, my, my problem with it is, without having some sort of a sunset clause, is let's, I mean, you're expected, it's expected to pay for itself, hopefully, or come close to pay for, paying for itself with the fees and everything you're going to charge to enter a lot of this. Am I correct?
Well, I think you're having a conversation about the rec center, and we're talking about the formation of the Parks and Rec district. So while the Parks and Rec district creates the foundation to fund a rec center, and the rec center itself has been proposed to be self-sustaining, the funding that we're requesting is for the Parks and Rec district, which independently can offer its own Parks and Rec resources, offer facilities, create programs, and the funding is specifically for that to do its work.
Okay, all, all I'm saying is, is down the road, the, the monies that you receive may be able to substantiate, or substantially fund the district by itself. You could direct those funds to fund the district, therefore the district may no longer be needed. And in my experience so far in the county, I have found that most people don't necessarily, I mean, if you've got that money coming in every year, it's hard to say no to it. So, you know, to protect the taxpayers, that's just information that I'm, I'm hopeful that they know. That's all I have, sir.
So, thank you, both Commissioners. I wholeheartedly support this. The questions, concerns I've had have been greatly clarified. You know, it's going to be some hard work. That's okay. That's what we're here for. And so if there's any way I can help, not just to put it on someone else's desk, but you offered the task force help, and we need to roll up our sleeves. The hardest job for me, this entire four-plus years I've been here, is to bring people together and groups together and communities together, and so I see it as a terrific opportunity, and I'm thrilled for the incredible work you guys have done to date. Way to go. Way to go. That's all I have. Commissioner Herzog?
I make a motion to approve the formation of the South Coast Parks and Recreation District.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Call for the questions, Staff Jesuit, please.
Commissioner Pash?
No.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried two to one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in the late part of the morning. I know you got to both get back to work.
Thank you.
Much obliged.
Thank you.
So the Coos-Currie-Douglas Business Development, the grant request to the US Department of Commerce and Economic Development Administration, this could have went on the, the consent agenda, but I'm looking for Board approval here. I had a letter that I wrote in rough draft, but I, I don't know if, I probably did not get that submitted to Staff Jesuit, and I don't have it on my documents in this little computer. Anyway, looking for Board approval there. The other two counties have approved at Coos and Douglas County. Basic the letter says, you know, "We don't have any additional funds to make up the 20%." And so this, the Coos-Currie-Douglas Revolving Loan Fund is a very active program that through the Economic Development Administration loans businesses to, loans money to businesses in our three-county district, so looking for Board approval. So I'll make a motion to...
Can you just, you know, kind of go over a little bit?
Well, it's right there. CCD Business Development Corporation will be submitting a grant request to the US Department of Commerce, Economic. Do you want me to bring this back after lunch, and I can give you the letter that we wrote? I also have accessible the Coos and Douglas County letters. So they're, they're pretty good leaders in this program. I'd rather not bring it back, but you've got some good supporting document here, documents, and EDA is anticipating that under the American Rescue Plan allocation, their starting rate will be an 80/20, meaning EDA provides 80% of the total project cost, and CCD would need to provide 20%.
You're asking them to waive that 20%, so we're not liable for anything?
That's correct.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? Call for the question?
Commissioner Pash?
Yes.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
The Steve Byerlin, Oregon LLC Strong contract extension, I don't know if I need to spend a lot of time on that. I think all of the Commissioners are getting periodic updates of his work. I did want him to give a little bit of an update today. We're slowly start, he, I shouldn't say we, maybe me a little bit, but he is working on pulling in the Coos County Commissioners, which we've been a little late on, but they are, I'll let him speak to that. Well, he was, oh, there he is. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner, Steve Byerlin, Missika Beach. Lots have been going on in, in the fisheries world. Some of it's pretty negative. One thing is the Rogue River, basically, because it's the only one that has spring snook salmon, has been targeted for listing in, under ESA listing. It's being reviewed now, and, or they're taking comments, National Marine Fisheries Service. We're in the same, we're grouped with the Klamath River, which their spring snook run has not done well. And basically, to be listed, you just need to show that there's a significant decline across a good portion of the range, you know, which is, you know, looks like that's what, you know, it is, because the, the run has not been good, you know, and I don't expect it to be good again this year, or in the near future. I believe most of our problems stem from federal management of water projects, and we'll have to see how that goes. We, Coos County has offered us to use their lobbyists in Washington DC to get things being pushed from Washington D.C. down. We have an appropriations request in for $26 million to modernize the hatchery. That may take several years to do, but we're, we put it in last year, we're putting it again, put it in again this year, but we got their attention and they're paying attention, you know, so far. If we do get a listing, I think it makes it much more difficult for denial, you know, or not putting money into the, to the Rogue Basin. Quite a few groups are involved and paying attention. I sent out quite a few emails, probably more than I should, but trying to keep people informed what's going on. The, the future looks both bleak and, and bright, you know, so. The bright part of it is that I think we're getting noticed. I think we're getting it out there, and Curry County is, in the last year, year and a half, is starting to be recognized as a fisheries leader, especially in the Rogue Basin. I'm keeping Josephine County informed. Commissioner Bob Main from Coos County is emailing back and forth three or four times a week, you know, on, on different things. We're discussing, you know, supporting each other, and so I think we're moving forward and are, are making a stamp, so.
So the, the Kokeel River news, not good?
Kokeel River is not good. Their step program, the ODFW shut it down, and they only had three females back last year for their egg take, you know, and the, and they're talking about closing the Kokeel for up to five years, the salmon fishing period, you know, there's, and they're also talking about closing the Sayuslaw and the Selets, you know, and, but it's, when I say they're talking about it, it's kind of under the table, it's not out front yet, you know, and so we're not seeing the light, it's not seeing the light of day, per se.
Have you heard anything from Senator Merkley's office on the 26 million recently?
They're very active, you know, staying involved, and Senator Merkley's going to be doing town halls, and the, I was, we were told by Merkley's office that there would be the top two subjects, one of those would be the modernization of the hatchery, the $26 million.
Commissioner Herzog?
Thanks for your tireless effort, and keep the emails coming. I, it's just sad what's happened at Coal Rivers and, you know, our, our runs, and to hear that there's, you know, so when I hear the Kokeel and those others rivers shutting down, that means just more pressure on the Rogue, and the sad part is it didn't have to, it didn't have to be this way. This is neglect, and it's wrong, so, anyway.
Well said.
Sometimes, sometimes you got to hit bottom before you can bounce back up, but, you know, we've got to get their attention, we've got to get, I mean, they're the, the big managers. They, they put most all of the water into the river, control it, you know, and ODFW has been pretty quiet. They, they put most all of the water into the river, control it, you know, and ODFW has been pretty quiet.
Well, if anybody can rear them up, you can. So Commissioner Pash?
I'm good.
So, I see I, my wife's going to realize I misspelled one word, expires. So, we're looking for extending a full year. I don't, I don't remember honestly. I'm just drawing a blank. Is that correct?
Last time it was done, it was for a year, yeah.
Well, as Commissioner Herzog said, thanks very much for your great dedication. It's going to make a huge difference long after we're gone. We want to get you paid here and it seems like we're just a little bit behind. Clerk Crook caught this and brought it to my attention. Much appreciated. So, board looking for a motion to extend the Steve Byerlin, Oregon Strong LLC contract.
So moved?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? I'm just going to ask you come back in a month or so and we'll do a regular presentation for maybe 15 minutes or so, so you're not rushed, okay?
Okay. I have a comment that when we first started into this fisheries, you know, getting involved in the fisheries, we were going to try and bring along the other rogue counties, Jackson and Josephine, and Coos has shown some interest. I'm sure there's probably a little bit of interest over in Douglas County as well. But it's not up to me to contact them and talk to them, you know, about sharing the cost and being, you know, part of it, you know. And I would hope the commissioners would, you know, think about trying to contact them and bringing them on board, you know.
We have a new board in Jackson County and they really, it's just a matter of finding the time to get to their offices and spend time with them. And we, we, we really need to make that a high priority. Yes.
I feel our coalition's falling apart a little bit because it needs to be, the commissioners help pull it together.
When grants pass, you have Bear Sugar and, you know, he was a Senate Minority Leader and he's a real outdoor guy. He understands. And so I really think just a matter of get the time to spend with him. And then Dave Dottor in Jackson County, he worked for Dennis Richardson for several years at the Capitol, just, just a super individual. So, yeah, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Need a roll call.
You ready, Staff Jesuit?
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
So here, oh, excuse me.
Well, I was going to wait for a minute, but item six or seven D, if I have a rap.
You say D as in day?
Yes, the reduction of the restaurant environmental fees.
Okay.
This may be a moot point depending on...
What OHA does?
Yeah, but anyway, go ahead.
Well, yeah, and I'm aware of that and I appreciate that, you know, and the, and the work we've been doing with them. I'm convinced that this can't hurt. If nothing else, if it gives public awareness to what these restaurants are up against, what up and down and the tremendous inventory loss, the employment loss. You know, I'm just going to make a recommendation to the board and this is my fourth attempt. Might be my third. I don't know. I included it all. But I've been accused of, yeah, you know, we're going to have the Department of Justice look into, because I asked two restaurants. I said it was more than that, but I went back and checked my notes and it was two. And I certainly didn't say anything, you don't have to pay the fees. What I said was, you know, I've been working on this for three or four months. We have a new board. I think they're somewhat amenable to looking at what Josephine County did and that is offering to waive a full year. These people have just been hit so hard and, you know, my job is to look out for the citizens and the employees and their interest. And there's absolutely nothing improper or illegal or any of that. So, the board sees my intent, the board sees the history of what I've recommended here. And in deference to those people that need help, I apologize that I didn't have a specific recommendation, but you've heard me say before, either a 40% discount or just waive the fees for one year. And let's deal with OHA. We're going to sit down at the table with them and challenge them. They're going to challenge us. And so that's, that's my take. Let's, I mean, I heard some things last meeting that basically said, they go out of business, so what? I mean, that was the spirit with some of the people in this room and I just, I'm just shocked. I mean, if you spend time with them and you see the effort they made and you see no fault of theirs. So, my, my recommendation to the board for consideration is a full year waiver of fees. And, yeah, we probably have to communicate to our, to our employers, our eateries, that we're going to work hard to make that case to the Oregon Health Authority, but it may be, it may be challenged and we may ultimately lose. So, does everybody understand that recommendation and that request? And can I get a motion, please? Commissioner Pash?
Well, I just want to state that I don't believe you can make that motion. I've read the ORSs on this and Counsel Pope may want to comment on this, but from what I've read in the ORSs, the state sets all the health department fees for the inspections. Those are state mandated. And from what I read from the ORS, the only way that those fees, that a county government can reduce those fees in any way is for, and I'm not going to, I'm probably going to miss one or two, is but for a religious organization, for people that are needing, of charity, for homeless. Those kind of things, we can waive those fees. But us as a county government cannot waive fees that are state mandated in any way. The other issue with this is you've already said you're giving public health back to the state. And I understand Mr. Rickert's comment a moment ago. And to expound on that, you've already given the authority to do that away from this board. You've said, state, we're giving you back public health. And the, and the state has responded, as we'll talk about later in a further meeting, on a, in a further topic here. So, we have no authority as a board to reduce any fees any longer. You gave that away when you voted to give this back to the state. So I think there's two precedents here and again, I would, I would defer to Counsel Pope, as I may be incorrect on this. The first thing is you've already voted to give it back to the state, which gives away your right to change anything from that point on. And secondly, as far as I read from the ORSs, we couldn't legally do it anyway because they're state mandated. That's all I have, sir.
Counsel Pope, do you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, sure. And I think as far as the ORSs, if we can or can't waive them, I'm not 100% sure on that. I'd want to look into that more.
Okay.
But I think it is a valid concern that we are in the process of transitioning our program over to the Oregon Health Authority. And so without coordinating with them, I'd be uncomfortable moving forward with something like this to make sure that we're just all on the same page and, you know, doing the right thing.
Thank you. So to date, the board, the past board and this board hasn't been willing to do anything. At least none of the commissioners, other than myself, have picked up. So, is the board willing to do anything to draw attention to this? Because many of the restaurants, and I just want to tell a quick story here, Kent Downs who left. You know, he contacted me and I said, hey, how do I get upriver to, to inspect some of these remote places? And I said, I think we can help you on that. I think Sheriff's Department might even be able to help you on that. I said, I can even call the Forest Service. And so logistically, it's a very tough area because it's road, there are no roads. It's boat access only. And he was a little bit, had a little bit of anxiety on how he could get this done. And so as a commissioner, I offered to help and even laid out an itinerary on which lodges are on which side of the river. Mariel is, is road accessible and you might have to go to Paradise and walk three and a half miles. So I was just kind of working with him and seeing how I could possibly assist. And, and I also did contact the Forest Service and say, hey, if our health inspector, you know, I can only take him up for the day or could the Sheriff's Department possibly take him up for the day and then he could maybe, may be required to stay overnight? And, you know, Forest Service could bring him out the next day. I just wanted to kind of orient him to what this situation was and he wanted to do his job. Anyway, later on in the government ethics allegations violation, I was accused of trying to do something that would financially benefit me. And it was, it was so shocking and yet those allegations were full of similar, absolutely baseless charges. So, he gave up and the lodges didn't get done. And that's a big part of our TLT program. Should have been, should be. So, I just want the public to know, that's the kind of stuff that we, that I've had to deal with here. These people that employ in our restaurants, you've heard me make, make the statement prior that, you know, people come here for the jet boats, you bet. The beaches and the Calmeopses, all the above, the Wild River coast. But they come here because our restaurants are special and unique. And if you've ever been, if you haven't been in the food business, it is really tough under any circumstances. And so these people wrote a bad check or unintentionally or flat didn't have the money. I would not do anything different to go to those people and support them and say, hey, I'm trying to get, you know, reduce fee. I'm trying to figure out, you know, $900 is what it charges and you didn't get inspected? So, is the board willing to do anything to send a message to these people other than tough luck? And I don't mean to poke anybody here, but it seems like that's the attitude we're taking. We're up against the state law or, you know, we're, there's nothing we can do. But I've heard the stories and it's, it's really tough duty, gentlemen. So is the board willing to do anything then, you know, to make a recommendation to OHA? To lobby for that, to say, here's where we are. We're behind in our inspections. No finger pointing there, but Downs is gone. And, you know, I would have loved a chance to take him upriver and work with him and introduce him to, to those five places, plus Agnes, three in Agnes. But I didn't get the chance. I couldn't begin to figure out why. So, one more time, I'm going to ask the question, is the board willing to do something there that might send, again, the message to the restaurants? That we know what you're up against and we'll help you any way we can? Thank you. Yes.
I, I think that, and I'm not positive, but I think we have, as a commission and as a county, not waived any fees, but said, the timing. Am I, is there anything that anybody can remember about, maybe even going back to the last year about timing? Miranda?
I just wanted to, Miranda Plagie, Economic Development. I just wanted to clarify, TLT actually has nothing to do with health, health inspection fees.
What's that again?
The TLT funds or collection. It has nothing to do with inspection fees. I just wanted to make that clear.
Did I misspoke?
I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, then I'll just comment to this. The support the county could have gave them with good inspections, that could have been done. That connection, actually our people from TLT should be going on that boat too and meeting these people and showing them the system. That was my original intent with Half Moon Lodge when new owners took over was, hey, we wish you all the luck in the world, but by the way, we do have a trans-state lodging tax program. So, I'm glad to get that clarification there. Administrator Ward?
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Public. Cherie Ward, still currently Curry County Public Health Administrator. I want to discuss the environmental health fees. And first off, I want to thank Jackson, or Josephine County. Josephine County Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, Environmental Health Program, WIC Program. I've had the utmost, Curry County citizens have had the utmost support from Josephine County. And I can't thank them enough and I want to put that on the record and I want to put that on the record to their board and all of their employees who have come to help assist Curry County while we are going through this horrible transition or whatever situation we are going to. I believe this is a shining moment and I do believe that Curry County can come forward and still have a current public health program as well as a current environmental health program and mental health program. Curry County citizens and Curry County still deserve and always do deserve a vital and lucrative public health program as well as a environmental health program, as well as, most importantly, a mental health program. So, on that, I do want to address the environmental health fees reduction. So, where I'm going with this is, Josephine County, the board has signed an MOU with Josephine County to handle our environmental health program currently while we are still trying to extend an offer of employment for coordinator. After speaking with Josephine County, who has been processing and handling our environmental health fees, any complaints that are coming in, as well as any plan reviews. Unfortunately, the day that you and the board, and I mean no disrespect to our board, decided to turn this over to the state, services still need to happen in Curry County. And those services have been happening and those phone calls still come in, restaurant owners, public health, all of it. And when losing staff and you turning it over, the state didn't agree at that point and juncture to take back public health or environmental health at that moment. So I'm kind of wondering where the big plan was and what you were going to do if I wasn't sitting in that chair every day and coming into this office every day to help provide some type of services to our community. So I want that on the record. So, Josephine County has been processing for us, environmental health coordinators, and thank you to their staff. But I will tell you, the total licensing so far received just in the health space system, we are behind on getting all those fees in. But our treasurer could let us know exactly what our environmental health fees have come in to date. We still have to get some entered over into Josephine County for them to put it into our system. But currently, we have received $130,947.50. Based on those fees for 2021, $49,594 is still outstanding. A lot of those fees are late fees of $24,406. And unpaid, some might be some unpaid 2020 licenses. So, Curry County Public Health, from the moment that we came in here, has stated that if through COVID-19, with the restaurants and people wanting to and having to pay those permits with the state and everything, we weren't doing complete inspections. And so when it came down to it, yes, they still had to pay fees for that. In regards to occupancy, we had environmental health also a coordinator there. Invoicing went out, we've had individuals paying their fees. They have always had the option to speak with Curry County Public Health to work out a payment plan if they needed that. We chose to go ahead and reduce the late fees. Now, those get automatically generated in the health space system. But when they send in, say for instance, a $950 permit that states that they had, and maybe their invoice shows they have $300 worth of late fees. We are waiving those late fees before we put that, if they pay that permit, we're waiving that. So, I just want that clear, that we are trying our best to help the restaurants, okay? Did I expect to be losing coordinator and environmental health coordinator and all of that? No. So, we jumped on that. We got Josephine County and they're able to help address those situations with us. Also, one of the things I don't believe the board realizes is that even though we do know that we have to, with environmental health, we have to remit, so we have to pay the state fees as well. And those fees don't stop if we decide to reduce 40% of those fees. So I'm telling you that right now, the remittance memo for OHA for a fiscal year, it's 14.68% of the profits that we make. And so $10,000 is a remittance fee that has to go to the state to run the environmental health program. So that doesn't stop. So if you want to reduce that, now, you want to give back control to the state, means that, that takes that one-on-one working with those entities and saying, yeah, we can maybe work out a payment plan with you or we could do that. Takes that completely out of our hands and control as a community and services. Not saying we're perfect. We were handed... We were handed a boat. And it was a sinking boat when we got it. Now, we have an opportunity to rebuild it. However it goes, I believe the citizens deserve to have environmental health program. I believe this, and Josephine County did advise me today that the one program that runs in the black is the environmental health program. It pays for itself. So, if you're deciding to turn that all back over to the state, we're still gonna end up having to pay for some type of remittance. And so, I just wanted to let you know that in regards to environmental health, and where we stand on that for the environmental health program.
Yeah, hang on one second, thank you. So, I appreciate the clarification, I understand that, and the effort to work with them on the late fees. Some have been shut down for two-thirds of the 2020 season, so they're wondering, okay, not getting inspected? And I've been shut down that amount of time, and I still have to pay the full fee. So, there's a lot of ORSs that are gonna be changed, or were somewhat amended because of what we dealt with with COVID. As you well know, the surprises we got every day, every week, every month.
I get it every day, and I even got it today, thank you.
Yeah, so, you can relate better than anyone here, I would think. So, the point is, I, I just come back to what could we have done other than say, okay, we'll, we'll let go of the late fees. We understand that you were shut down for, you know, two-thirds of the year, and you lost all this inventory, but as a county, we're not going to be able to help you, other than we'll, we'll relinquish the, or forego the late fees. It's not enough to me, personally. I, you know, it's just my opinion. And who's fighting for them? So, the state, I'm not convinced is gonna come in and say, we're in charge now, get the HE double hockey stick out of the way. If they are, then we're gonna have some pushback. I'm just not anticipating that at all. Especially when it comes to environmental fees, and how important these places are to our visitor industry. That's all I have, thank you.
And I did want to put on the record, from day one, I have been in support of not harming our community and our economics at all. COVID-19 is a virus. It's not any different than a communicable disease that we deal with. We need to find the fix. We have, it's a communicable disease. We have to report it, it has to be investigated. As we go forward into recovery, it's gonna end up being just like another communicable disease as we have guidance that we have to, you know, investigate. Right now, we're still in that process of what's the cure? Vaccines? How much is the quarantine and isolation? All of that aspect in the health aspect of a virus. So, will we get past this? COVID-19 is gonna be with us forever, okay? That's my, it's a virus. How do we cope with it, and how do we handle COVID-19 in the future, is where we need to come to terms with. It's just like every other communicable disease, that is a reportable disease.
I'm gonna ask you to stick around for a little bit, if you can, because it's, it's going right into our next item, which is put on by Commissioner Pash. But before you leave, does, do either of the commissioners have a question? Of Administrator Ward?
Cherie answered my question. I know, I knew we were waiving something, it was late fees, and I would go with Anthony's. You know, without him looking into what we can and can't do as a board, I couldn't move forward with any other recommendation.
Let me make sure you understand. So, no movement forward to any kind of, even to recommend to OHA that we give a break in the fees, or part of the fees at all? Is that, is that your position?
Well-
I don't mean to put you on the spot, just to make sure you understand.
Yeah, no, that's, that's my position, you know, until the council could, could say we can or cannot do it.
So, I just, Commissioner Herzog, or, I'm sorry, Pash, I'm apologize.
No, I don't really have anything other, other than, I, I don't believe that, that we can legally do that, and that's my opinion. I do not believe we have the legal authority to, to change anything, to ask the state to do anything. I'll go into in a few minutes, some of the things that I've learned from the state, but, and again, I'm not saying there isn't an ORS that somehow changes anything, but all I know is the current ORSs that I've found, through my investigation of this, we have no legal standing to tell the state or ask the state to do anything.
So, I'll just conclude with this, thank you. When you look at what's going on with the governor and OHA and their authority, and how it's been exerted this past 15 months, we're in that position anyway. So, my position is, how can we work with the Oregon Health Authority? And I think we've started that process two, three months ago. And so, I want the public to know, I'm looking out for our restaurants, and the families that are supported by those restaurants, and I'm gonna continue to do that. And I am gonna be lobbying, I wish we had full board approval that basically said, can we at least make a recommendation to OHA? But I, I sense that that's going nowhere, and that, that's very disappointing to me. But I've been in the restaurant business, I know it's tough duty, and these people have been through really, really tough times. And it's, it's just hard to watch. And so, even if, even if $900 for one year is symbolic, you know, I, I'd rather, I'd rather cut cost here than say, it's our money that we're giving up. We don't keep them afloat, it's gonna be even, even worse. So, Commissioner Pash, we need to go to the next agenda item?
Well, basically, this is continuing the conversation, and we've actually covered a lot of it in this conversation. I, I just want the public to be aware that we were sent a letter this week from the local public health, Oregon Public, Oregon Health Authority. Wow, first day with my new lips. From Rachel Banks. And I just want to highlight a couple of things in this letter. That they, basically, our local public health is, is going to be handled now through, through Portland. And they, they are telling us what they can and will do, and don't have to do. And they are not required to provide, this is one of the things in this letter. OHA is not required to provide any staff, regular staff onsite, as many of these statutory obligations can be completed from OHA's central offices in Portland. We may choose to utilize subcontractors to deliver these services within the jurisdiction. And the delivery of those services would be a matter of OHA's discretion as the new local health, public health authority. So, basically, the gist of this letter that they sent us, and it's open for, if anyone wants to see it, you can contact me. It is that OHA, and this is another quote from them, is not obligated to provide or contract for the provision of public health services and activities within the jurisdiction beyond these following statutory obligations. So, they're basically telling us, right here in this letter, that they're not obligated to do certain things, and that basically, our public health will now be run from Portland. And basically, everything will be long distance, there will be no more hand-to-mouth kind of conversations like we have now with Administrator Ward. There will be no more public pressing of flesh, for lack of a better word, to be able to have our constituents, the people in this county, have a, have someone that they can call and talk to in this county that understands what they're dealing with. The WIC services that are provided in this county, that Administrator Ward had already taken steps to hire someone to cover that with the, with the loss of the, of the employees that she had. And the MOUs that she had already had prepared to be signed in an agreement with Jackson County Commissioners, who fully agreed that they would evidently rather see this remain in Curry County, or they wouldn't have agreed to it, they would have said, hey, send that up to, to Portland as well. One more fact for the citizens of this county is, there's only one county in this whole state that has given public health back to the state. Do we really want Curry County to be run by the State of Oregon? Or do we want to have our local controls here to be held by our local public health authority? As, as Curry County to be the local public health authority? And I, I don't want to belabor this, but this was all started a few years ago, a couple of years ago, by Ken Duquet, and when he decided not to renew contracts with this county. And we are probably going to be discussing the mental health side of this in more detail in the, in the coming minutes. But now, we have learned that he wants to bail on the mental health services. And that in itself has put this county in the situation that it is in, and has put the reorganization of public health in the state it's in. And I am in great fear for what's going to happen to our mental health services in this county as well. I attended a meeting two nights ago in Brookings. Jenny, Jenny Williams, the CEO of the hospital here, as well as one of her board members, and, and their, their head nurse, testified before the Brookings city council of the great strides that they'd made in the hospital here in the county in the last year and a half, when they expected a lot worse. I think the only negative comment I heard from her is, she, she's waiting for the board to see what, what's going to happen with mental health, because they are in fear, and I'm not quoting her, I'm giving her, her answer in, in, in a broad sense, that they would be in fear of having to deal with the non-transfer of mental health services from the hospital to the mental health services of the county. And how would they stage that situation? Not only with members of the jail, you know, and those kind of issues, but with suicide, suicidal, and all those kind of issues. She, she would be looking for direction immediately, because they don't even know how they could deal, begin to deal with some of the issues of giving mental health services back to the state would cause here in the county. So, this is just a quagmire that is gonna continue. I would urge this board, I see we have an amended order from the, from the state that we're going to have to revote on, because evidently, what we sent them, they weren't in agreement with, they amended it, and have asked us to revote on this. So, I would urge this board to rethink the damage that we're going to do by giving public health to the state, and work as hard as we can with the state, and with our Director of Public Health, to keep it here, and then begin to deal with the things that we're going to have to deal with, with mental health services, as we have an upcoming court date. And that hasn't even been adjudicated by a judge yet, the answer that we're asking in that. So, to move forward with that is, in my opinion, extremely premature. And I think we need to let our local court make a decision on a, on, on what we've asked them before we move forward with any movement on mental health services. That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner Herzog?
No question, no comment.
Well, thank you both. Here's a, here's an email we got, I think on the 12th, give or take. If a local public health, if local public health is failing to administer and enforce public health laws, OHA's director is required to take direct charge of the functions necessary to preserve public health in that jurisdiction. The expense, key line here, the expense of taking charge of these duties is to be borne by the local public health authority, unless the local public health authority requests a transfer of its authority, which we have done. The housekeeping effort today is just that, refining a little bit. There's no ambiguity with Oregon Health Authority. If Oregonians want change in the public health aspect, and the expense that it is, and the tremendous qualifications required, the tremendous organization, it's gonna have to come from the legislature. It's not gonna come from county by county that simply cannot. And, and a lot of counties are looking at, Willawa County, Curry County, and there are some issues. It's just not Curry County struggling here. It's gonna be very important for the public to know, how did we get here? We can keep blaming it, this board can keep blaming it on Ken Duquet. It just isn't gonna hold water, the facts don't support that. How we got here was boards that were inactive, that passed the buck, and didn't do their job, and then it got dumped back in our lap. And then we have the Oregon Health Authority come in and say, you're not doing your job, we're gonna make some serious changes here. It didn't come as a surprise. You know, we would have liked to have maintained this, it's one of the toughest decisions that I've ever made. But I'm gonna stake my reputation on being able to work with OHA. And you just offered that, Commissioner Pash, which I appreciate, in that we better bring everybody to the table. The CCOs are, are running in place. It's, we've got some tremendous opportunities here. Public health today is different from past years. Many services now available to the citizens through the Oregon Health Plan. It's no surprise our county has struggled for a lot of years, and it's been costly. We do not have the resources. I'm not done, thank you.
I thought you were done, excuse me.
That's okay. We, we, we obviously don't have the staff, we're down to one. As we move forward on this, the challenge for us, and something that we have not done, and could have done with Curry Community Health, we could have brought everybody to the table, and we failed to do that. Instead, we went the, we went the legal route. Boy, did we show them, no, no, we failed. The citizens, we failed the process, and here's what we're dealing with today. To where people in this community are saying the, the craziest things, because they don't have the information. So, back to the legislature, that's what it's gonna take. Here's a letter I got from Care Biddlecom. I'll just read the first couple of paragraphs. This is the, the person representing OHA, and why I have good optimism. Dear Chair Boyce, this is April 27th, yesterday. Thank you for your email and thinking through communications for Curry County residents. First, from a communications perspective, OHA is implementing the resolution made by the governing body of the Curry County Local Public Health Authority. The decision to transfer was one made by the Curry County Board of Commissioners, and we aim to make the transition as seamless as possible for the benefit of the communities. I appreciate your framing of service to the citizens of Curry County, as I certainly want to instill confidence and trust in your county residents, that OHA will be supporting their health through implementation of statutorily required public health programs. From our perspective, our press release will need to focus on the facts of the transfer, what it means to county residents, and what we will be doing collaboratively, collaboratively on the transition. So, I'm looking forward to working with them. They've got the horsepower. If you want to contact, you know, let's see, Representative Brock Smith's name was brought up today. He was a commissioner here for four years. He knows what public health, the difficulties that come with that, the money that is required, that we don't have. I, I just don't know how we can get around that. I don't know how we could ignore that. And I, I'm not gonna let us ignore how we got here today, and the tragedy of how I strongly believe and lobbied so hard for to avoid. So, that's all I have. So, you have something, Sheriff?
Well, I have a lot of things to say, but Sheriff Ward, Curry County Sheriff's Office. You know, when Curry Community Health had the contract for public health, they dumped it back on the county. County wasn't prepared to take it. They didn't have the resources to do it. It had to be built. They had to take some staff. Now, the staff that just quit, I made a comment last meeting, that it may have been because of higher wages that they were getting back then, and they were gonna be, maybe I may have missedpoke. Whatever they, the reason they quit, they quit. We have to move forward, okay? The thing is, when you, when that letter came out, it came out within, within a few days after public health went down to one staff. So, there's some issues there. But, it also said that local public health authority basically is not enforcing the public health laws. Mr. Boyce, didn't you send a letter to the, the governor's office about two months ago, saying that we're not going to enforce any lockdowns, anything that restricts county people and everything? That means that you're, you don't want to follow their guidance, the OHA's guidance, or whatever. You're not gonna follow it. And then I hear that you're going to get maybe five counties to make a resolution to go against the governor's orders of the masks and things like that. Well, that's, that's not enforcing the public health laws. I mean, to me, it just makes sense that you're not. Now, when you're-
Now, when you're not including the public health director in on that, how is she supposed to enforce those laws if you're telling the state to shove it up their you-know-what? But now you want to take the control back from the state, but then you turn around and you want to give them public health and mental health? Let me tell you something about mental health. The sheriff's office, the local police department, and the state police use mental health services every day.
You want to stay around, we're going to talk about mental health later.
Hold on, I'm, we're talking about, and what happens when we deal with the suicidal people every day, people with mental illness, we contact mental health locally. Hey, we need some help, we need an evaluation. If we do a peace officer hold on somebody because they're suicidal or dangerous to somebody, we take them to the hospital, public health, uh, mental health is supposed to come and deal with that. If they don't, we have to take that person and give them right back to the situation. We just pull them out of and say, sorry, or tell the family, sorry, we can't help you. When we arrest somebody with a mental illness and we put them in jail and they're suicidal, we have to put them on a suicide watch. The only way we can take them off a suicide watch is that we have a local mental health person come and make an evaluation, do a treatment plan, whatever, before we can take them off. Otherwise, they sit in a cell and we have to watch them by themselves. And we can't take them off. And you think Portland's going to come down here and send a mental health provider down here and say, hey, you know, we'll deal with it? No, you don't do that virtually, we have to have local mental health authority here. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to do our jobs. And we don't have the resources to deal with people who are in jail with mental health, they don't need to be there. But that's a problem.
Sheriff, do you feel like Curry Community Health, if we're just going to talk about mental health here for a moment, do you think they did a reasonably good job the times they contracted with the county?
You know what, at first, it was horrible, and then it got better, and now it's bad again. But we still have people, we still have that, we still have that resource. We don't want to do it without the resource.
Yeah, the reason I ask that question is because you said it's bad again. And I submit to the public, that's because we took them to court. That was a wrong strategy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We took Curry Community Health to court instead of working with them, that was the bad strategy.
I don't have, you know, that's not my realm.
Well, you're here talking today, so I'm just having an honest dialogue with you. And I appreciate if you, we have a give and take here, so that's how we got here, Sheriff.
It's not my realm, I don't, I don't deal with the legal portion of it.
But you answered my question, which I appreciated, you said, you know, it got good and then it got bad again. So that's good data for me and the board to hear, in my opinion.
Well, you read into that what you want to read into it. It's still, we still have the services, maybe we don't get exactly what we want, maybe we can't get them all the time, but we still have them available.
Okay. Commissioner Pash?
You just said a little while ago that you would like to see all the CCOs get together and everyone get together for mental health and talk about, you know, the transition for that, no matter what it is. And I appreciate that. What I'd like to ask you is why didn't that have happened with public health? What was the rush to kill public health? Why couldn't we have said, you know what, let's have a workshop, let's get the hospital together? Because when Ms. Schmelzer and I spoke with Oregon Public Health, Oregon Health Authority, about having to take public health back, OHA told, came down here and met with us, we had phone conversations, and they said, we'll do all we can. Ms. Razzo, from, Williams now, from the hospital said, hey, once you guys get public health up and running, let us know, we'll come over and meet with you and we'll start, you know, maybe I can share a service with you. Maybe we can help expedite something for public health. What I don't understand is why we couldn't have a workshop, why we couldn't have a public meeting and invite the hospital, invite the CCOs over here and talk about the letter that Ms. Ward got. And by then, we would have already had her answer and perhaps another letter from the state and gotten direction of what we'd already solved, she'd already hired someone to handle WIC services. She had already got an MOU together with another county and their Board of Commissioners saying, hey, we want to help. So she was already taking all the steps. And why we couldn't have just taken a little pause and said, you know, let's get the hospital, let's get all the CCOs, let's get all the people that this is important to, discuss it, and then make a decision that was based on all the facts, rather than looking at a letter and saying, oh, we got to act on this today, when we didn't even have an answer due from our public health administrator for a forward-looking time.
Excuse me, when you talk about those letters, you're not reading all the letters. I know when the response was sent on the 16th and what they did, I read a copy of the letter that came back, says, hey, you know, basically, I'll summarize it, it looks good, you know, we really don't want to get involved unless we actually have to, but your board already voted to give it back. Come on, guys. You're talking about what's damaging to our county, to our citizens. The citizens never had a chance to speak up about anything. You rushed it right through, and that was my whole thing, what is the rush? You got a letter from the state because they got a complaint from somebody, I'm assuming that somebody was, had worked here or worked around county government, that said this is what's going on, and they sent this threatening letter, and you act on it, boom. Without even letting the public know or giving anybody a chance to figure out how to fix it. You just don't give away. You've been fighting with the state to take control back, but then you turn around and giving it to them.
Well, we have a line that can't be crossed, and that's our responsibility. And we also, in the middle of the worst health crisis a hundred years, it's their issue to deal with, they have the money, they have the qualifications, they have the expertise. And so the best thing we can do is team up with them. That's the decision I made for the best of the, for the very best to the citizens. And we got down to one employee, that's dangerous, that's dangerous.
Well, there was in-process hiring somebody, you guys never took that step. There's MOUs in place, it was being, starting to rebuild before even they got that letter. You never gave it a chance, that's just it. And I'm, and I'll say it again, I've asked her to quit this job a couple minutes ago.
Sheriff, that doesn't hold any water anymore.
It does.
Well, not to me, it doesn't, I'm sorry.
It does.
All due respect, doesn't, doesn't, you're out of line to even have an opinion on this.
No, I'm not out of line, what I'm saying is, she didn't need to work here, but if she would have quit, this county would have been in bad shape because of the COVID response. When that COVID response come, that's the priority, everybody is all hands on deck to do that. And it's her, she has kept this county going through this whole thing. Worked 10 cases yesterday that came in.
You don't have an argument there, you, I don't think from anybody on this board, you don't have an argument. The position we need to take as a county is what's the best thing for the citizens and how do we proceed aggressively forward to overcome?
But you never gave it a thought, Court, you guys voted it right through when you got that letter. You go, oh my God, we got to do something right now.
No, we didn't respond that way, we didn't get panicky, we spent late night hours trying to figure out the best thing to do.
You voted to give it away with no discussion with the public. And I'll guarantee you, I've talked to several high people in the cities who are also affected by this, and they're very upset that they never got to weigh in on it, taking public health services away.
Do they want to contribute to the county budget, Sheriff?
What's that?
Do the cities want to contribute to the county budgets? Budget?
That's not my purview, okay?
Well, you're saying it's the county's responsibility.
You said there's no money for public health, that's a drain on the county. What happened to the 4.6 million that's coming in and most of it, I'll tell you, David Barnes can explain it too, most of that's supposed to go for public health services.
You know what, there's going to be a line outside that door a mile long telling us how we should spend it. And I hope to God that we put it in a lockbox and use extreme caution, because the pressure's going to be tremendous. Did you have something, Commissioner Herzog?
No, just a little, John, I appreciate your passion, I, but this was not a snap decision, a rushed decision on my part. And I, you know.
Well, I sent you an email, I never got a response back from him, but I pointed out some things that I wanted you to think about. And if you say it's not a snap decision, how can it not be? When you get a letter and all of a sudden, two days or four days later, you're giving public health back? That's, now that's a rushed decision. Commissioner Pash also said basically, let's get the groups together, let's figure out how to fix this. Not just, that's the only, the only explanation is, let's give it back.
So, yes, you're next, I'm sorry.
So what I want to say is, you know, everyone was saying what a drain on the budget of public health is. Public health, WIC services pretty much pay for themselves with the fees that we get. WIC services pretty much, as a matter of fact, they might even be profitable, there might be profit in WIC services. The other emergency services or...
Environmental health.
Environmental health services, those are also pretty much a break even. The only, I think the only thing that public health is losing money on is we have to contribute quite a bit to the director's salary. But other than that, public health isn't losing a lot of money for the county on its bottom line. So I just want to make sure everyone was clear on that.
So, are we... We'll give you two minutes, Connie, please join us, thank you.
Connie Hunter, and I'm talking as the person who is tasked with the Access to Healthcare Work Group for Community Health Improvement Plan. And that's the coalition between our two CCOs. And one of the things that Commissioner Pash asked was, why didn't these meetings happen? Why weren't the CCOs brought in and a conversation? And I have to tell you that we were in the process of getting those meetings together and even had talked about having a workshop. Commissioner Court is our Community Advisory Council Chairperson for Advanced Health. However, because of COVID and everything that happened, meeting times were, we tried to set them up. It wasn't like we were refused that, okay, we weren't. It was a matter of, and I won't use the term that veterans use, we'll call it a cluster mess, and a coronavirus being the cause of that. So I'm not pleading left, right, or center, I'm just saying there are reasons that those things happened and those things were attempted. And when the three city managers were going to meet with public health, I tried to get an invitation. I should have went directly to Cherie instead of the city managers, saying, let's have those CCOs in there. And that's where a big shortfall happened. And so I'm not here to do anything to thumbs up or thumbs down anything, but just fill in some information blanks, that those things were tried and just couldn't happen. And some of it's going, I'm going to have to say, some of it is my own personal failure for not recognizing everything. But we did have conversations that pieces were falling through the cracks. And that's all we wanted to address, but it just didn't happen for those reasons, thank you.
And all I'm saying is nothing should have been done until those meetings took place. Nothing should have been, no final decision should have been made until the CCOs, the hospital, everyone in this county that was going to help to contribute to public health and its success could get together in a room and brainstorm it to make decisions, that's my point.
David Barnes, County Treasurer, I just want to make comment here. Commissioner Herzog, you said you thought hard and hard about this, got a lot of info. One of the things you didn't do is come to anybody and ask what the financial implications were for this county. That's part, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's a pretty critical part of making an informed decision and forming your opinion. But you did not do that, sir, I sent you an email on Monday offering you the opportunity to come and sit down with me, and I would explain the financials to you, but you didn't take me up on it. Commissioner Boyce, you mentioned how this has been, how public health has been a problem for years. I need to bring up, and I need to make sure the public remembers that you were on the Board of Curry Community Health while this was happening. This, you know, you say it came as a shock to everybody that they gave, that this happened, but you were on the board.
I didn't say anything about a shock.
Were you or were you not on the Board of Community Curry Health?
Yes, and I know Facebook said I was a paid director, which is absolutely ridiculous.
I did not ask that, sir, I asked, were you on the board? Were you on the Board of Community Curry Health?
Absolutely, proudly, sir.
And you gave up that board seat when, sir, about a week or two after they gave, after this whole thing happened?
Yeah, that was the appropriate thing to do. So November of what, 2019, I believe, what's that? Next. So we have, what I am going to propose, commissioners, is a task force, I've had four different public health professionals. I tried this in April and, oh boy, did I get shot out of the saddle. But I'm going to try it again, and I think we get these kind of people that are in this community that will contribute their time. This is how we can hopefully be better prepared to be at the table with OHA and the CCOs. And I'm very optimistic, incredibly optimistic. So, I need a motion? For, let's see, oh, that was just your agenda item. So then we go to, do we need to finish this? Council Pope, as far as adopting the ordinance, going from the resolution to the ordinance?
I think that's up to you guys, we can move forward or we can do it after lunch.
No, let's do it now, I would entertain a motion, be done. And then the next item will be, when we come back from lunch, would be, correct me if I'm wrong, termination of the financing, certain, three different agreements, two different agreements, excuse me. So do we have a motion?
Motion for amended resolution of transferring local public health authority responsibility from Curry County to the Oregon Health Authority.
Second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Commissioner Pash?
No.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried two to one.
See everybody back here at one o'clock sharp, please.
Commissioner, I believe it needs to be, lunch needs to be an hour.
Nice try, boys. How about 1:15? Thanks, JJ.
That's okay, that was interesting. Welcome back, everyone, Curry County Board of Commissioners, April 28th, 2021, resuming our regular business meeting. I think item 7G, letter from OHA, are subject termination of financial, financing of public health services agreement number 159808, termination of environmental health services, IGA number 5, I'm sorry, 154675, and responsibilities for certain public health services. County Council Pope, this is a pretty important one, too.
It is, that's correct. So basically, since we have agreed to transfer services over to them, they're wanting to kind of terminate the two contracts, we have the two funding contracts. The first one is for the financing of public health services. The other is the intergovernmental agreement for environmental health services. And so according to this agreement, if we do sign it, those contracts terminate effective May 2nd at 12:00 a.m. And then in addition to those two contracts...
12:00 p.m., isn't it?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I think?
Whoa, 12:00, I guess right...
12:01 a.m.
12:01 a.m. is probably how it should have been written, yeah. So as soon as we get into Monday, the first, second of Monday, it would be. And that basically would transfer, you know, all those services and things that we've been required to provide back to them. And then additionally, and they say in the contract here immediately, in phone calls with them, they've indicated that also means May 2nd, they are going to take back control of the services related to COVID and all communicable disease work, the WIC program and environmental health.
Those are the big ones. Discussion Board? So looking for a motion, you have a director asking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've just got a question, so terminating the funding arrangements, does that mean a substantial portion of what we've received, or all, or prorated to May 2nd?
Yeah, prorated to May 2nd. And then I think there's going to be some, you know, work with us and them to try to determine if there's any funds that we've received that we haven't spent that, you know, we need to return to them. But yeah, as far as the contracts, that would be the end. But yeah, as far as the contracts, that would be the end date as far as, yeah, funding.
And we're, we're, we're sure that there's some unspent funds?
I, I would almost guarantee it because we've had a lot of unopened positions and things like that, so.
They've already told us there's unspent funds.
A question.
Mr. Barnes?
David Barnes, County Treasurer. I just received a notice this morning about the, um, the money that we get from the state every month for our Public Health Department. Do I, would, how do I respond to that?
Just hold till, till you get some direction from, I think, do we decide you were gonna be our key person to?
I don't think we, yeah, we haven't talked about that yet.
We need to talk about it. So I, we, we actually can't give you an answer, so just put it in a lockbox and, uh, we'll, we'll be able to respond as soon as possible on that.
Okay.
Mr. Pash?
Well, if we are discontinuing and we're signing all these agreements and, and nullifying other agreements, um, what do we do with, um, Ms. Ward's position? Is she terminated? Um, what do we do with the woman that already, she had hired and gave notice to quit her job to come work for us? Is she just a casualty of? I mean, these are more things that we need to think about.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, uh, we did, uh, when we made this decision on the 14th, uh, that should have, uh, uh, I assume that, uh, Public Health Administrator Ward would have communicated that to the new person. And certainly going clear back to April 8th, uh, we knew that there was some, some, uh, issues that we needed to deal with. And of course, we have. Regarding Administrator Ward, uh, she is, uh, it, it's gonna be a minimum of three months, and it could very well be six months. And, uh, I, I would think that, uh, with her background, uh, she would want to apply to OHA. Uh, that, that would be my hope. Uh, but I can't speak for her, so I hope that answers your question.
Well, it might be nice that she knows her future. I mean, that this board, I mean, I can't imagine going week by week wondering if you have a job. We've been through that with others.
Mr. Herzog?
I think we talk about that in executive session and, and come up with a plan.
Okay. Uh, I will, uh, I will certainly agree to that. Uh, a good question, Commissioner Pash. What's next?
I make a motion to, uh, approve the letter of termination of financing for Public Health. Seven G.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Call for the question, please.
Mr. Pash?
No.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried two to one.
Uh, agenda item number seven H, MOU, memo, excuse me, of understanding women and infants, children, uh, agreement with Josephine County. Uh, that becomes a, we can either extend that to May 2nd, or we can just, it's, uh, it's, it's just not effective. Go ahead, Council Pope, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've talked to the Oregon Health Authority about this, and it's their recommendation that we don't sign this MOU, since they are gonna be taking over that service on, um, May 2nd. Um, it's my understanding that Josephine County has done some work for us already. And, um, the Oregon Health Authority says they will work with them to make sure that they're, uh, you know, get back any funds that they're due for the work that they've done. If we do decide to sign it, as you mentioned, they recommended that we have an, an end date of May 2nd. Because at that point, that's when, uh, we will no longer have that responsibility.
We also ask for a, you know, kind of a co-responsibility there to, to not delay the payment to Josephine County. I believe they agreed to that. Yes?
I would ask that, uh, you're the liaison for Public Health. If you would please notify Josephine County as well that we're not going to be signing the MOU, notify their commissioners. And I would also ask that you give the commissioners a signed copy of that order showing who voted what. Because I don't want, I just want to make sure the commissioners there, um, know that I didn't vote for it, because we had had conversation about it.
Shall respond as you requested, Commissioner.
Guess you need to say me.
So we have agreement there. Whoops, I'm sorry. Gotta throw something at me there.
Somewhat unrelated, issue is also the MOU for emergency service, I'm sorry, uh, environmental services um, with Josephine County. Um, what is, I assume OHA is also giving the same guidance there that we terminate that May 2nd. And, uh, I guess you may want to include that in your memo to the Josephine County Commissioners.
Yeah, uh, agreed, uh, and important. Did we all, we didn't sign that, so that we just failed to get that on the agenda today, correct?
For WIC, it's, it's on the agenda.
For environmental health?
Environmental health was signed probably a month ago. Um, Josephine County has been performing those services.
Did we sign that?
Yes.
And you say about a month ago, okay. So Council Pope, what, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't say, yeah, um, we, we have been talking with, um, Oregon Health Authority about that as well, and they just asked us to collect together all the contracts that we have and then let them know. And then we can come up with a plan on how we're gonna terminate them or maybe transfer them to them. So I think the best thing to do is we can just get together all that we have and then work with them to figure out what we're gonna do from there.
And you have Staff Starbird working on that, and my, my preference would be to leave these two MOUs separate for now. I, I, I think, if, if the board agrees with that. So we read it proceed to seven, I didn't say one yet, I said I, or I'm gonna say I. Curry County Board of Commissioners, special meeting considering transferring, uh, the local mental health authority to Oregon Health Association. It pops right up there. So, um, I'll read a letter that I have from Adapt Health. Uh, we've been working behind the scenes. Uh, they are ready to make a presentation to our board here. If they're still interested after our decision today, and I believe that they will be. Uh, we have two letters, uh, one is April 15th, uh, they were asked for clarification. Uh, you know, I, I don't need to read that letter, but I'll read the letter on the 21st that we received from Gregory Brigham. And this is, uh, got considerable involvement with the, uh, CCOs. And a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of confidence in the capacity of, capacities of Adapt Oregon, in this case, Adapt Health in Douglas County, Roseburg, uh, to be able to serve properly the mental health, uh, needs of Curry County. Um, and yes, we've been working on this for at least a month to try and beat the deadline regarding the, uh, litigation between Curry Community Health and Curry County. So here's, uh, and Council Pope, you're of course more, most welcome to interrupt me at any time, but this is from Greg Brigham, who is the, uh, the CEO of, uh, Advanced Health in Douglas County. Uh, greetings. I am surprised at this turn of events. I was clear from the beginning, uh, three conditions need to be met for Adapt to enter into public due diligence, the process within the intent of serving in the role of CMHP, that's Community Mental Health Program, for Curry County. Two of those conditions relate to contractual arrangements with the CCOs, and those two conditions have been met. The third condition was acceptable contracting with the state for CMHP. Acceptable forms of contracting would be directly with the state, with either Adapt or Curry County serving as the, uh, local mental health authority. This last condition took some time to develop, has no one seemed clear on the current arrangement. I am surprised that OHA would force this change in the contracting arrangement, particularly so late in the process. I was clear with OHA that contracting with the county was not an acceptable option. I would need to review this with my Board of Directors, which he's already got, um, approval, and that's referenced in the April 15th letter from his Douglas County Board, um, to help Curry County and, uh, start the process here. I would need to review this with my Board of Directors, and I think this will likely eliminate Adapt's interest in serving as CMHP in Curry County. We would of course stand ready to help in any other way that we can. So what I want the public to know, basically, this is taking the place of Curry Community Health. Uh, they have the people, the staff, the interest, the reputation, um, the, uh, as I said a minute, go to the capacities, the capacities. They just want to be able to deal direct with OHA, which is what they do in Douglas County. And so this, uh, decision by our board opens the door, um, and starts, starts the process so that, uh, they can actually make a presentation to the board, uh, our board and their board, and, uh, put this together, and hopefully in time before, uh, Curry Community Health, um, is, uh, unfortunately out of the picture, and no disrupted service, services for our county. Commissioner Herzog?
It's my understanding we'll know Friday, April 30th, the decision, correct me if I'm wrong, Council, whether we get it back 30th of June or December 31st.
That is correct. So far, um, we may get a ruling on Friday, or it may come later in the week or, uh, two weeks or so. But it, the hearing is on Friday to discuss this. Sometimes the judge will give a ruling at the hearing, other times he'll take our advisement, issue his ruling later. But as far as the, the two options, yeah, basically, if, uh, Curry Health is successful in that hearing, we'd be taking back mental health services as of June 30th. If we are successful, it would, um, the date would most likely be the end of December.
I'll offer something else here. I did put this on your desk earlier, and, um, it's just two small paragraphs, and I think it'll be helpful. Adapt can move forward with public due diligence as soon as we resolve this issue. This is April 15th, by the way, sorry. And an early step in that public process should be to engage current CMHP employees, but we need assurances that this condition is met before we take that step. Now, the reason I was really pushing hard for a Monday meeting, because it would have gained them two days on this, uh, which is a big deal, and we have a lot of Curry Community Health employees that are basically sitting in limbo, wondering if they have a future working for, for, uh, Curry County Mental Health, or if they don't. So I'm, I'm making this deliberately publicly to let them know we're doing everything we can to try and set Adapt up, as well as the CCOs, to be able to contact them and accelerate this so that they're not, uh, left one minute longer than is necessary. Last paragraph, I realize that Curry County has legal action pending on the actual termination date for CCH Services. If Curry County prevails in that action to delay the contract termination to 12:31, 21, I would suggest negotiating the most advantageous schedule for the transition. Otherwise, we are on a short timeline to ensure minimal disruptions in CMHP programs with hard transition data 6:30, 21, which you just referenced, Commissioner. Thank you. Any questions on that, or?
So they want to come to?
Well, yeah, well, he's, he snuck in behind you there, that's okay.
I just wanted to give a little background, and, um, a lot of this have obviously happened before I got here, but the current situation is Curry County is the local mental health authority. The, we actually aren't involved in any of the contracts right now. All the contracts with Curry Health are directly through the state. So we, we don't have any employees in the county right now that are dealing with the mental health authority contracts with Curry Health. And the state has stated to us that they're not comfortable moving forward like that ever again, that either they would have to be the local mental health authority and contract directly with, um, the provider, or if the county retains that, then we're gonna be the ones that have to set up those contracts and make everything work. So I'm just trying to kind of clear the situation where we are now. We basically hold the local mental health authority and that liability, but we actually aren't engaged in providing anything.
So, so that means Adapt, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, they, they want to deal directly with the state, which is very common around the state. And, uh, we just had a special thing that the state accepted, being OHA that accepted for Curry Community Health, kind of a one-time option, and we lost that. So I, I, I'm pretty sure that's accurate, though.
Could you repeat that again?
Uh, we are the only ones in the state that basically could, uh, be the pass-through, uh, with, with the contract for the service provider for mental health. Uh, nobody else in the state does that, and that's why Adapt is basically saying, if you're gonna remain the local, uh, mental health authority, then we can't, we can't continue to pursue this, this action to help you. Yes, go ahead.
I think Commissioner Herzog has something first, but then I have something.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll think about my, go ahead.
Well, for me, uh, first of all, and again, with all due respect, I, I just, um, we, we have nothing right now to do with, uh, Public Health. It is still run by Kanduke. And, uh, and the state, they're, all the contracts, as, uh, Council Pope just stated, are, are direct through them. Um, we have a court action that is going to be taking place at the end of the week that, um, the court will rule on at their leisure. So until we get that ruling, we don't even know where we are, and I can appreciate preemptive information. Commissioner Boyce, uh, I gotta, I, I gotta be very frank, though. I don't know, um, where, how these conversations started with Adapt. I don't, I, I don't know that much about Adapt. I don't know how, um, you know, these, it seems negotiations have taken place. Uh, I don't know as the board has provided anyone with a liaison responsibility to do that. And so I don't know how all this got started. Uh, I, I think, again, we may be perhaps getting the cart in front of the horse until we hear from the judge. Um, then I would suggest we get our hospital together, all the CCOs, who, who, this Adapt, and all those that, uh, are going to have to deal with this. I, I want to make sure the board is clear, and as you heard our sheriff testify to earlier, mental health services in this county, um, I believe need to be left in this county. It's just something that we deal with every day. And hearing, um, Ms. Williams from the hospital testify in front of the, uh, council, City Council in Brookings the other night, and it was just a passing question, but it seemed to her to be an extremely serious topic. And that is, how will we do the transference of people that come to our hospital into the mental health system if we don't have something locally? And I, and I'm not gonna quote her, but it was something to the effect of, I can't even imagine how that would happen. So there's a lot of, a lot of brick paving that we need to do before we can go down this road. And I, I would suggest that first thing this board does is appoint a liaison that, that deals directly with this issue. And, uh, if Council Pope is, would be, um, open to that, he understands a lot of the legal terms, and a lot of that, I might suggest that for him to be the lead on this, um, because he's gonna also having, be having conversations with the state, understanding the laws, understanding Oregon, um, with his past in, in, in North County, in, uh, Coos County. And, uh, and from there, having a workshop on this and getting all the people that this is going to affect in one room and having a conversation, and let's do it expeditiously. You know, we don't have to put this off for a month. Let's, let's plan a workshop next week or two weeks from now. But let's get it done, because if Judge Margolis, or whoever the, the judge is going to be on this, I believe it's Judge Margolis, rules immediately that we're gonna take this back, yeah, we've got three months, well, actually two months. So we're gonna have to move pretty quickly. I know, I don't really know that much about Adapt, and again, I don't know how all these, um, conversations started. And I, again, it sounds to me like some negotiations have taken place without me as a board member knowing. And, and I don't know that anything has been brought to the board about these conversations, and it concerns me somewhat. That's all I have.
Mr. Herzog?
I would, uh, appreciate Council Pope's, uh, recommendation on this and, and, uh, just, uh...
If I may first? I, I want to respond to Commissioner Pash, um, in this regard. The CCOs have been in the middle of this heavy, incredibly supporting. This is their, this is what they do. If, if I'm the issue, then I'll gladly walk away, because I don't want to be a part of a tremendous program that's right before us, and having them leave because of our inaction. I don't want to be a part of that. And that might be where we're headed right today, that we're gonna postpone a month. We're gonna put our marbles in the litigation basket, which isn't gonna gain us anything, one more time. And, uh, they've come through with good spirits, the CCOs have come through with good spirits, I've involved... I've involved a lot of people in the health, as Counsel Pope can verify. I've made sure he was there every day, every meeting, every virtual meeting, and he's contributed greatly. So if I'm not your guy, then it's in my best interest to walk away from this because I, again, I'm going to emphasize, I don't want to be a part of losing a reputable company. And you've got, you've had plenty of time, I think, Commissioner, to do your research. And if the CCOs say, yeah, we trust this company, boy, and the situation we're in and again, how we got here and where we're headed, more legal stuff. And you heard the last part of that letter, so services are not disrupted? I don't know what more you want, guys. So, did you have something else? Or Counsel Pope, I'm sorry. I appreciate you letting me go ahead of you there. It was, I, thank you.
First off, I mean, Commissioner Herzog asked me kind of weigh in on my opinion. I think my role here is more legal-based and if you have legal questions or if we can or can't do something, once we start getting onto what we should or shouldn't do, as long as it's legal, I think that's kind of beyond the bounds of what I should be commenting here. And kind of the same thing with being the lead on this. I don't mind being a part of it and helping out just because of the nature of the organization, how the county's, you know, set up. I do think there should be a commissioner that is either with me or leading it, that I can assist. I just think it's kind of getting outside of my role of providing, you know, legal counsel to get involved in these more policy decisions is what I'd call them.
So there's your decision. If we want to respect the request of Adapt Health and let them immediately, I wish we'd had this done a week ago. Again, that's why I called to ask for the Monday meeting. We had a county treasurer that called a meeting and I had 10 minutes to prepare. And I asked for a special meeting yesterday, or Monday, I'm sorry. And, you know, we could have, we could have got this done. So what is a pleasure of the board here? I'm going to emphasize again, I think this is absolutely in the best interest of our citizens. And by the way, OHA, they may not pick Adapt. I'd be surprised if they didn't. But the CCOs have a big voice here. They have a vested interest. They are determined to help. They understand their role, tremendously supportive. And I'm really surprised we're having this conversation. We might delay for a while. The information's right in front of you. And again, I would just be very disappointed if this board walked away from them rolling up their sleeves and ready to start putting together the entire staff that we need for this county. Delay them a week, delay them what? Just my head's spinning. So, yes.
I really don't have much more. You've heard what I had to say. I think that in order for us to move forward with this, I believe all the forces that be in this county should be present, our hospital and all of the CCOs, absolutely. But let the hospitals say, okay, Adapt, when we get to this, how are we, how are we as the hospital supposed to handle this? Who do we call? Where do we go? You know, where, how does this get handled? And let those questions all get answered between the professionals and come up with a reasonable, a reasonable plan, strategic plan on how to handle the mental health services for the citizens of this county, not only to help the citizens of this county, but to protect the citizens of this county from some possible issues as we heard about today with locks not being in offices and those kind of things. It'll never happen in Curry till it does, but let, let's have those people sit in a room and come up with a plan and then we as the board look at it and go, that's a great plan or it's not a plan or can we do this or that and then make that policy. That's our job.
So that's exactly what's taking place. The people that are responsible, I'm bringing it to the board today. Again, I'm not sure what more you would want me to do. I had CEO Razzle in my office with her head nurse, Isaac, who I've known since a little kid, great people. They listened in. Counsel Pope can verify. They listened in to the second to last meeting we had. So they are informed. And their concern is that if somebody brings a mental health patient to Curry General Hospital and there's no other place to house that person and the hospital actually gets a four-day overnight stay that they cannot afford, which would be tremendously detrimental to their finances and they're not set up for, obviously, Adapt will take care of that. That's their job. That's their job. So why would we delay a week, a month indefinitely? These people have put in the work, yes.
You mentioned earlier about having the Adapt come and do a presentation and that's when we could invite these, you know?
I think that's a great idea, Commissioner.
And let's do it as quick as we can.
But they're not going to deal with us if we are the, if we remain the local mental health authority. They're not going to deal with us. They don't, they don't need this work. They are the best option we have. That could change. Like I say, OHA might have somebody else in mind that they would have, that they would contract through those services. But we need to, we need to relinquish our local mental health authority and this thing will move fast and yes, they will come before the board, post haste. And if you want to have a special meeting to accomplish that and not wait till the 12th of May, I would be all in on that.
And they wouldn't do that prior to us handing it over, you know, I mean, in a room?
We're playing with fire here. Don't let them walk. Don't let these people walk.
I don't think CCH would have walked if, if they didn't have us as the local public, or mental health authority. They'd probably still love it because mental health makes the money for them. We don't know enough about this company.
Oh, my gosh. I hope they're not listening. Oh, my gosh. So I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we get them to, you know, and bring a presentation to us ASAP with all the other people involved, the hospital administrator, CCOs. That would be my motion right now.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Abstain?
Abstain?
Yes, sir.
Motion carried two to zero.
Item seven J. Commissioner Pash?
Yes, in fact, it's only, should only take a couple of minutes. We have had for, since I've been in office, a logo that we use for Curry County. And I have noticed recently Commissioner Boyce's letterheads that he has designed a logo and he places it on official county business as board chair or board member of Curry County. And that's his logo. And I don't understand, usually counties are, have a logo. And I think we need to be united in that we have one logo for the county. I'd also like to show you, Rich Christiansen sent me something yesterday and I thought it was really interesting. One second, please. Fat fingers. I'll hand it out to each of you and you probably all, you may know this logo from the past. This was the Curry County logo back in the 50s that he knew of. And here's a clearer version of it, which I only have one. And I think it's a really cool logo because it shows everything Curry County stands for. We got logging, we've got horses, we've got sheep, which there used to be a lot of sheep in this county.
Still is.
We got cattle, we got the crabbing boats, we've got boat recreation. They've even got an image of Arch Rock on here. The rivers are on here, everything's on here. So I just think this is something, and again, here's a clearer version of it. If we're going to go to a new county logo, I would like this board to consider this old logo that was used forever here and bringing it back because it really, it even shows Agnes on here, Commissioner Boyce.
Yeah.
It shows everything. It shows Six's River, it shows the Elk River, it shows the Rogue, it shows.
Wild horses.
Shows everything. It's just a logo that I think this county might reconsider bringing back. And I also believe that we need to be united in a county as having one logo that we all use as the same logo. That's all I, that's all I wanted to bring to the board is, is that we, you know, I make a motion that we, we all have one logo and we need to pick the logo.
Why don't you include your motion to change it to at least something very similar? I would definitely support that because there's no vampires in there, you know? I mean, that's been my biggest issue. And no fish, you know? You heard Coordinator Vialan today and that's, that's part of our whole program.
Well, the fishing is.
Natural resources.
Is the fishing boat.
Okay, that's a commercial fishing boat. So that, you know, that's okay. I'm just, how does the board want to proceed?
Can I see that clear one?
Sure.
Please?
No, that's mine.
And you said 50s?
Rich told me it was from like the 40s and 50s. He said they used it for quite a long time. What he drew it off of was from the 50s. It was one of his guys found it. And so why don't you guys consider this because it's, it shows everything.
That is definitely a 50s log truck, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I would be in favor of changing the logo and this is, this may not be perfect, but it's pretty close in my, just for what my opinion is worth.
Why don't we adapt that as our logo then?
Do you notice how it's, kind of needs to be?
Rich sent it to me, so.
All right.
It's a 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock.
He's got a crown. It's got a little crown on it for the road.
Okay, so where are we? It is.
So are we?
148.
Can I make a motion that that becomes our logo?
Please do. Well, I wanted a salmon in there. Am I going to lose on that or am I just complicating things?
Well, you got a salmon trawler right there.
Yeah, but that's, that's what they call resource extraction. You know, it's not catch and release, but you know, of course, I'm for commercial fishing, for goodness sakes. But no, that's fine. I think it's, I think it's a tremendous improvement.
Add a drift boat?
I might be complicating too much.
I like it.
So leave it as it is? Are you thinking, at least for now?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Second.
As, as your treasurer, I have to point out that the cost of doing this is going to be incredible. All, all county business cards are going to have, everybody's going to need new business cards, all new letterheads, everything that has the county logo on it is going to need to be replaced. The cost on that is going to be significant.
Can we?
I'll amend my, you got the motion.
So we don't have to do, we can, we can have two logos. We can keep the old one for our cards and, and car stickers and not be in a big hurry to spend money. I totally agree.
But the motion was just to have one uniform logo used throughout the county.
But he's interested in amending that, I think. Did I get that right?
You amend it and I'll, I would, I would amend, if I was doing it, I would amend it to, as soon as the old stuff runs out, then we replace it with the new.
And that could be two or three years?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay.
But until then, we use the current Curry County logo. Until then, we use the current Curry County logo.
Yeah.
Director Rickert?
I'll just point out that it will, it will cost money to digitize it and, and some time there. I don't know if that's really a big concern, but, and then just point out again the, the point of using one logo. That's all.
I think we might want to workshop.
Logo workshop?
Yeah, because there are some good points being communicated here and so we don't have to be in a hurry.
That's fine.
And, but, Economic Direct Coordinator Madison? For a logo?
Hi. I think it's a great idea to workshop that. Probably want to put some more thought into that as much as I love both logos. Probably need a professional to come in and help you identify images, colors. I think the more detail you have in there that's specific to our economy, the more gated it could be. For instance, we're working hard on green energy and there's nothing relative to that in there. So kind of think about that as well. Yeah, just, just think.
I'll withdraw my motion. Let's move on.
I'll draw my second.
Okay, so we have 10 minutes, guys.
Excuse me, Board. I'm, I'm sorry I was late to this and I was wondering if I can just have a couple of minutes to speak about that MOU. I know you guys probably already declined it, but sorry. Public Health Administrator Shree Ward, I was on the phone dealing with a very upset parent about a COVID-19 exposure and things like that. So doing services and providing public health services to our community still. So I wanted to just reiterate in regards to the MOU of understanding for WIC services with Josephine County, just so you were aware. I understand that you are giving everything back and don't want to sign this MOU and are declining it. But I did want to at least reiterate what Josephine County WIC Department has already done for Curry County and I think it's, it needs to be said. So they, the community understands that these services are still being provided and that we are still liable for providing those services. So since April 13th, seven brand-new clients were added in the WIC program. Thirty-six missing, thirty-six clients were missing benefits for the month of April. The benefits were issued, appointments scheduled and clients contacted, received an additional two calls to work with Curry County physicians to get specialty formulas and processing of medical documentation forms and troubleshoot this with prospective families. Roughly 15 hours already from Josephine County has already been completed. And as of 1:30 today, they were going to head and had an appointment to set up and add another pregnant mom to the schedule. So I understand we are giving away all of our public health programs, but I'm telling you, WIC is vital to the community and our, our clients here deserve to have public health. And that's all I'm going to say. And I do want to say to Josephine County, thank you again for lending a hand. And just so I understand, you declined the MOU, signing the MOU, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sad day in Curry County. Thank you.
No more public comment on that. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. We'll make an exception.
Okay, it's just real brief. There were two parts to Pash's last thing about the logo and I really do think you should vote about one commissioner not using a separate logo, that whatever logo you're using as the Board of Commissioners should be used by all.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. So what we can do here, we can go to director's report. Is that next? Yeah. We've got about five minutes. Oh.
Have you already taken your logo vote?
Uh, we tabled it for a possible workshop. We'd love.
Oh, good. County Assessor Jim Cullen, the only thing I wanted to say about that, I, you know, I haven't seen the 50s logo probably in a while. I'm sure I've seen it someplace. But the one thing that I'd like you to consider is there would be some expense in changing that. I mean, my intent would be to use up all my stationery and stuff that I have with the old logo, but all of the county vehicles out there do have the old logo on them and so, you know, presumably you'd want to be looking at change in that. And there's probably, you know, I know some departments have office-issued clothing that, that has the logo on it. So I mean, there will be some other expenses that if you take it to a workshop, might not be a bad idea to think about those things.
Mr. Barnes was just slightly ahead of you on that. I think you were probably on the phone. Yeah.
I wasn't on the phone. I was probably on my way over here.
You know, I just set off a.
You just didn't start talking soon enough.
I set off a heck of a firestorm here. I mean, the house burned downs, we're, we're talking about the cable, you know, the cost of the cable. So I'm going to withdraw my motion, my logo and bring it before the board, hopefully at a workshop.
But definitely put the fish on.
Thank you. Okay, so can we go right to the, to the workshop? Come on in, roguestuary people. Huh? Boy, we have some distinguished people here. Port Director Wright, how are you?
Let's not get carried away with distinction.
So I, we're going to, we're going to recess, hi Kelly. We're going to recess our general meeting and.
We're gonna recess our, uh, general meeting and, uh.
Build local economies and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways.
We didn't assign a liaison to that as we discussed because Council Pope said he didn't feel comfortable doing that. So I think somebody needs to be put in charge of that. You're on, Commissioner.
Back in regular session, we just left workshop. Uh, the next item on the agenda is. Seven I?
Is that right?
Yeah, we were discussing, um, who was, you know, Council, we asked, or Council, I'm sorry, uh, Council Pope. Uh, we asked Council Pope if he would be, I, I did ask him if he would be interested in being the liaison and he felt uncomfortable. His job is, um, is more the legal end and I agree with that. So I just think the Board should have a, have a, a liaison person that is the contact person for OHA. For Public Health and Mental Health Services. So I don't know who the Board wants to assign as that contact person, but.
Court has been the liaison to public health. As long as they do it together, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Council Pope, do you, uh, do you think we've been effective?
I think it's good and I think what we can also add to that is, um, for any calls or anything that we, we get from them, I can put together memos or letters that keep the other Board members informed of what's going on.
I like it.
And then, um, you know, that way we're just all kind of in the same loop of what's, what's happening.
And just so the public knows, and I'd ask you to do that on a couple of times, and man, you, you got it done quick and got it to the Board, which I really appreciate.
Have a motion?
Second. Oh, second.
No, you're making the motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Uh, are we done with, uh, the action items or?
No, we still had, um, M.
M was moved to.
Oh, executive session, I'm sorry, that's right.
Moved to executive session, yes, so we are at director's report, oh no. We got one more, I'm sorry, seven N, our. Oh, the reason I pulled that is just, uh, you and, uh, Director Rickert and the Treasurer had a connection with NACO that you recommended. And I just wanted to have the public get a little clarification on that. It sounded like a reasonably good plan to me for what little bit of information we had, but, actually I shouldn't say little bit, that was about an 80-page document, wasn't it?
It was 20-some pages, I believe, yes. From NACO, yeah. The guidance on this money isn't, on the ARP money, isn't clear yet. Treasury has not put out a specific guidance on it. What we're based, what we're using now is what NACO believes is going to be their guidance. Um, as of right now, it seems that, uh, the lion's share of the money seems to be earmarked for public health issues, which puts us in a interesting position here. But, um, what other, I've, I've been following other counties, I, I, I'm on, what's called OCTFO, I think is the acronym. It's the Oregon Association of County Treasurers and Finance Officers. And all the other counties have set up separate funds, um, to put this, to put their ARP money into. The government is gonna require strict accounting of it and want to know where it is all spent. And the easiest way to do that is for us to set up a new GL number for it so that we can track the spending. Um, we are going to be called on that and have to, have to reply to the government on what we spent it on. And the easiest way to do that is to have its own GL number for ARP funds. Um, you know, later on, we can talk about the parameters of how we're going, where the money is going to go, what it's going to be used for. There, there are, like I said, there's no specific guidelines yet from the Treasury, US Treasury. But as they come out, I will let the Board, I will keep the Board informed about that. Um, one of the things, um, in an email exchange yesterday, um, I really think that it would behoove this Board to start thinking about coming up with, appointing a committee. We're gonna have people who want, want to get some of this money. You mentioned something earlier this morning about, um, rescinding, uh, the environmental health fees for restaurants. This is possibly something that the money could be used for. You know, I don't know yet, but it's a possibility. But we're gonna want to have something in place where small business owners, individuals, et cetera, have a mechanism that they can apply to this Board or to a committee in order to get money that we have. You know, this money's not supposed to just sit, it's supposed to be invested back into the community and to help people out who are in need. So I, I'd really like to, to hear this Board come up to at least open up the idea of, of putting together a panel to accept applications for the money once we know. And then to decide, you know, whether you're gonna do it first come, first served, whether you're gonna have it on a needs basis or how you want to do it. But it's a lot of money that's supposed to be coming in and we need to spend it right. We can't, it, it's not for messing around with and I don't want to get in trouble with the federal government for, you know, well, you spent money on ABC, but that's not proper. So now we're gonna take that money back from you and have it come out of the general fund. You know, I want to be very careful about this, that we don't get ourselves jammed up with it.
And we don't have to be in a hurry to spend it either. There's no deadlines, uh, is it five years or what?
I saw two years.
Yeah, I think it's four, but I could be wrong on that. I'm, I'm, you know, I, I don't want to spend it just to spend it, that's, uh, that, that, that's a real serious. In my, in my opinion.
What I understand of it is we'll get half the money and two years later, we'll get the other half. If we don't spend the first half, we probably won't get the second half. So it's my, it's my interpretation of what I've read.
Okay. And so the Board, uh, I'm sure is in agreement with the special account and that sounds, that's, that's very good news to me. And, uh, we'll learn more as the days go on.
As I hear more, I will report it to you guys.
That's why I pulled it out of, requested the Board pull it out of a consent agenda. I'm really, yeah, very helpful.
Thank you, I, I had put it in as a regular item and it got put to consent, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You put it in as consent.
I have one more thing.
Commissioner Pash?
Ty Downing also, did you pull that one?
Yes, and we put that in other.
Okay.
Thank you. So director's report, please.
Does, does the Board need a vote on that then for the new fund?
I'll make a motion, we create a new fund for the, uh, ARP money.
I'll second it.
Good catch, Director. Any other discussion? Call for the question, please.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Director's report, please.
Okay, so I have, uh, three different things. One, I just wanted to follow up on something that, uh, the Board directed me to do, uh, about, a, a few weeks ago. And that was, uh, we had, uh, the Teensters 206 Employer Trust that, um, was, um, demanding, um, some, some extra money from us, if, if you remember. And I'm not gonna worry about going into the details on that again, but.
I don't know if the public can hear you, but I can't hear you even in this room.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
You're sitting in his ear.
All right. And, and so I was directed to write a letter to, to Teensters, to, to the Employee Trust Fund, negotiating that, that amount down, um, which I have done. And just as follow-up, I, I haven't heard anything back from them yet. I've, I've sent them another email, um, asking about a timeline or, or any information. So, um, just so you guys know, that's not being lost in, between the cracks. The next thing I have is just a reminder that in two weeks, we, we have budget meetings starting on the 10th, which is a Monday. So 10th, 11th and 12th. The 12th is there if needed, but that is a Monday, Tuesday and a Wednesday. The last thing I wanted to do was to give the Board an update on, uh, just, just one of the departments, Economic Development. What, what's going on with them, what, what they're working on. They have several big items that they're working on to help, um, some of the local businesses. Such as restaurant, they work on the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, which are state grants that will help restaurants. The renewable, the rural renewable development zone is another area that they're working on. There, a lot of what they're doing is getting the information out to businesses, helping them through the application regulatory processes. But, uh, those, those are two of the, two of the things that they're doing to help out the businesses in the county. And they're working on the Indian Creek Fish Hatchery fundraiser. Um, again, helping to get information out to the public so that it can become a, so that that can be a success. They're working on a tourism, or that Tourism Promotion Committee is getting back up and running. And they haven't had a meeting since, I believe it was December. But they have enough for a quorum now, their first meeting is this next week. So that's, that's exciting that that is going to be, um, productive again. They're also publishing their first quarterly tourism newsletter. This letter, this is something new that they're doing. Uh, this letter, or this newsletter is going out to all the businesses, uh, to inform them of community events, state tourism news and, and other information. It really just helps keep the businesses informed. And, and, uh, the, all, all those businesses who are paying those business fees, business license fees, are receiving that newsletter to their benefit. See, they are also, last, last month, we had a workshop on fire district consolidation. So Economic Development is working to coordinate those efforts and help those, help that moving, help that keep moving along. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on for that department was that they are assisting in coordination and promoting the Small Business Summit in the region. Sorry, Small Business Summit for, for the region, which is scheduled May 14th. So again, just working on getting all that information out to businesses, so, so that they can benefit from, from that forum. That is everything that I have.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herzog?
Nothing.
Commissioner Pash?
Well, I wanted to talk a little bit about, um. I'm sure we've all had conversations and calls from people in the county about this restaurant thing and the public health and the situations with that. As Commissioner Herzog knows, he met a group of citizens last week about the, um, the offering of putting off license fees or rescinding them or whatever. And, um, I made my, I made it very clear that I didn't think that that was a proper thing to do for one commissioner to do. So after that, I've also had a call from two attorneys in the state. And it bothered me enough that I called an AOC attorney. And I did not mention any names to that AOC attorney, I just said I would like to put a scenario in front of you. If an elected official told someone in the county as one person that they could do something that might be outside of the parameters of the law and I explained to him what it was, putting off or suspending license fees until they heard from him. What would the liability for the county be, or what would the problem for the county be? And his response to me was three words, liability, liability, liability. And what he told me was we're opening ourselves up to a possibility of lawsuits in three different ways. The first is those are state regulated fees, as I mentioned earlier. And the state, if those weren't paid, could come after us for any fees that were uncollected. The second was, um, that if you told somebody that they didn't have to pay fees and subsequent to that, the state pulled their license. And this was his words, not mine. That restaurant believed from that commissioner or that person, because I did not mention the word commissioner. That they believed from that person that their fees could, could and would be waived and they would have no consequence to it. That as well opens the county up to a lawsuit. And the third was a class action lawsuit from all the restaurants in the county. Saying how come I wasn't chosen to have, get to waive my fees, why was it selective? I would ask that this Board reconsider, um, some of the steps that it takes. Another way to protect this county from this exact thing, because we are now open to lawsuits, is to provide a censor for Commissioner Boyce for doing this action. And it's a continuous thing. Excuse me. We've got, you know, other things that have taken place over time here. And this is something else that is now on our plate. And, uh, I have not gotten a hold of Katie Cammer, who was our prelegal for CIS. Um, she has not, uh, called me back, I called her on Monday, I think it was, and she hadn't called me back. And I don't know if she's been in contact with County Counselor or not. But at, the last time something like this happened, uh, which was the Camp Host situation, prelegal warned us that a censor was needed to protect the county from lawsuits. This, in, in my opinion, is a far, far greater, um, thing. And we are open to different types of lawsuits on this. And I think the county needs to be protected from those lawsuits. So for that reason, I am asking for a censor for Commissioner Boyce to protect the county from lawsuits.
So one more time. Didn't tell anybody they didn't have to pay their fees. It's not gonna work, Commissioner. You've tried everything you can try and you just keep getting the defeats handed to you. And, um, what I would like you to do is go talk to these restaurant owners, one in particular. And you look him in the eye and you say, wow, tough luck. Tough luck. So, um, I think you can see that this is never gonna stop. This is the 10th try. I fight for my citizens, bottom line, and I will keep doing that. If you want to talk about the Camp Host, that still haven't been contacted. And how they were treated, and if that's what you want to represent Curry County, and I believe that's, you've made that clear. So, um, the fight goes on to do what's right. And I like being right in the middle of that because that's what I signed up for. So, um, obviously I'm not gonna second that. I, I did think about at some point perhaps stepping down his chair because of the direction of what you just communicated in those efforts and how you spend your time. Because I don't want to be a part of, um, that kind of activity that is, that is simply that callous to, uh, the needs of our citizens. And, uh, that's been proven time and time again. There's better ways I can spend my time to serve the citizens. They know my commitment, they know my passion, they know my heart and, uh, I didn't gonna change. Just some of the stuff that's been said on Facebook alone is so egregious and false. The kindest word I could use is ridiculous. So, um, did you just make an official motion?
Oh, I hadn't made a motion yet, I was going to after.
That's all I have to say.
So on the finish of my comments, I'll make that motion. And it's only for that, for the reason of that, for the offer that Commissioner Boyce made to restaurants in this county to delay and/or hold back on their payments until they heard from him. Because I have been told by two attorneys and a third attorney for AOC, has voiced his same extreme caution. So I would ask for a censor for Commissioner Boyce, um, for the statements he made, uh, to the restaurants.
May I ask if you have documentations to back up those, the AOC?
I can give you a phone, I can give you, you know who the county coun, or who the Counsel is for AOC?
Certainly.
Give him a call.
Okay, thank you. But you said multiple attorneys, do you have other documentation?
I, at this point, I'm not gonna release that. I'm sure AOC can verify everything I've said.
Did you send it, and it via an email or did you?
No.
You, you made your presentation by telephone.
I've got a motion on the floor right now, Commissioner.
So do you have anything else? The motion dies for lack of a second. Do you have anything else on your Commissioner's report?
No, sir.
Uh, and you, you didn't have anything, Commissioner Herzog? So. I just keep working on this draft and I want the citizens to know why the attacks keep coming. These, these are the amounts of money.
These, these are the amounts of money that are growing, that in the last 60 months, five years, that have been wasted. And even if it's only half of what I am estimating here, and it's a rough estimate, but there's some tremendous validity to what has happened and why I'm being targeted continually. And I'm not going to stop presenting the truth to the citizens. And we keep spending and spending and spending and spending unwisely. And it's just really, it's just really tough to be a part of a board. Not, certainly not the last four months, with some exceptions. But the 1718 Board of Commissioners and the 1920 Board of Commissioners, it's all right here. And so at some point, I'm going to ask for a general fund bud, uh, audit so that we can see where these funds went and the damage to this, to this county. These funds cannot be retrieved, they cannot be recovered. And I was against every one of them, the record clearly shows. And I was told to stay in my lane, you're micromanaging, you're working in a toxic environment, and it just is absolutely ridiculous, the, one of the things I've been accused of. So this is available to the public, it needs some additional work. And I want the, I want the citizens to know that I'm here battling for the truth nonstop. So the only other thing I have here... I guess she didn't want to speak. Your turn. Were we done, or?
I've just about, thank you, just about, had to find my information here. The Housing Committee, there's some real good work that can happen there. And we're going to talk about that at the very end of the meeting, we're pretty close. There's, I, I did get a letter from one employee about Curry County having a working-from-home policy. You know, that's been an issue with me, just trying to make sure that we're treating all of our employees fairly. I certainly want to talk about excess vehicles. There's a tremendous demand for vehicles nationwide, specially used or partially new. And I think the county could liquidate a lot of rigs that we do not need and recover our cost. You know, I really don't want to hear about what a great deal we had and, and all that. I just know we have a parking lot full of vehicles that we can't justify. At least, that's my very strong opinion. And so I'm going to be bringing that to the board, be working with Enterprise. Hopefully, we can make a precise recommendation to the board. The Restaurant Revitalization, of course, I'm going to be interested in that. And yes, I've been working with Economic Development Department on the Rural Economic Development Zone. I'm still going to be pushing for a grant writer. I think this county with the funding can definitely justify a COVID relief coordinator. Those, those are just some of the areas that I would like to bring before the board and get some consensus on and some movement forward and, and improve our management. So that's all I have there. Anyone else want to add anything? So we're going to go into executive session, and we're going to start with 192.6602A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff, may, member, or individual. But wait, board, do we want to go to 10B because of the CAFSA grant? Is that, does that make sense?
Yeah, just...
So we could go there first?
I have, I have no problem with that.
To consider the dismissal of this, or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff, member, or individual agent who does not request an open hearing. So we'll change tapes here and clear the room if we could, please, and be right with everybody.
I think everyone can stay, right?
Welcome back. We completed our executive sessions for Jan, excuse me, April 28th, 2021, Curry County Board of Commissioners, the time is 4:25. We're asking staff to proceed as directed. So back in regular session now, we're going to go to item number 11, a new hire of an employee. And we, I believe the board wants to go forward with disregarding that, at least for the time being. Is that right? And then on the, on number 12, other, on our, get my notes here. Just disappeared.
For other, there's the CAFSA grant and then appointing Ty Downing as the Housing Committee appointment.
Good, so do we need any further discussion on the CAFSA grant board?
I'm, I'll make a motion that we approve the CAFSA grant. Jim, do you want to speak to something, or?
Yeah, absolutely. Curry County Assessor, Jim Cullen. Just for clarification and, and for the public, earlier you had pulled the CAFSA grant to put it in an executive session under to consider dismissal or disciplining or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff, member, or individual agent who does not request an open hearing. I mean, one, it appears that none of those are applicable. And two, I've given no information in advance as to whether or not I'd be interested in an open hearing. And then three, really, the, the information that, that was, that I was asked about didn't have anything to do with the CAFSA grant. So I'd just like to make those, those points clear. And then regarding the CAFSA grant, this is something that we do annually. This is, you know, a pretty good document. It's one of the ways that the Oregon Department of Revenue has of keeping track of what counties are doing around the state, assessors officers are doing around the state. This CAFSA grant, if approved, could mean a grant to Curry County for, and the CAFSA grant. Commissioner Herzog, you had asked me about that before. What it stands for, it stands for the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant. And this grant could mean as much as $200,000 to help go towards funding assessment and taxation in Curry County for the 2021, 2022 tax year.
Or budget year.
Thank you. Assessor Cullen, you made a motion?
Yes, sir.
Did we get a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Call for the question, Staff Jesuit, please.
Mr. Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
So we, thank you, Assessor Cullen.
Have a nice day, sir. I will, thanks, sir.
So we're going to item number 12, other. And the reason I asked for the housing appointments to be put on others is because I just want to run something by the board that I think will, it's, it's kind of a clarification or additional appointment. I'm going to recommend that we, and we don't have to do this today, if the board wants more time to do it on the 12th. Yes, I want to put as a business representative, Ty Downing. I'm in support of, of his, of the board approving him. But I'd like to move David Barnes to the Central Curry from North Curry. I'd like to move Samuel Strom to the position at Large 1, confirming Ty Downing for the business rep. Then appoint Mary Rowe as the first alternate, taking the place of Samuel Strom. Do I need to make, I, that's a lot, I probably should, you want me to repeat that? Just take a moment. Move or designate David Barnes to the Central Curry, which is the position and where he lives from North Curry County. Move Samuel Strom, who is, move him to the position at Large 1. Go ahead and approve Ty Downing for the business and appoint Mary Rowe as the first alternate now to take Samuel Strom's place. And I don't mind saying it one more time, if you like. Or you just want to do Ty Downing today and do a little more prep on this for the 12th?
Yeah.
I would be okay with that.
That would be my recommendation.
So the board would prefer just to vote on Ty Downing today as a business rep? Yes.
What did I get?
Oh, yes, your name did come up, sir.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to repeat it because it would, it would be helpful, I think, to the, even the public. Officially designate David Barnes to the Central Curry Housing Committee position instead of the North County. And move Samuel Strom to the committee position at Allerton 1. Go ahead and approve Ty Downing the business rep and appoint Mary Rowe as the first alternate to take the place of Samuel Strom.
Okay, so I'm still on House?
Yes.
Okay.
So confirm me, we don't want to vote for all four?
I would like to...
I, I think it'd really be better to put it on the agenda, because that's the proper way, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, but we do have on the agenda Ty Downing, so I'm looking for a motion on that.
So moved.
I will second that. Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Commissioner Pash? Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Anything else, board? We are officially adjourned. Council Pope, you didn't have anything? That is really official now.